For September 8th, Wednesday evening, 6:00 PM. Would you join me in in the Pledge of Allegiance? And I will do that tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, before we get started this evening, if any of you are accessing this meeting through Zoom here in this room, it kicks everything out of order. So, please do not open your device. It's just enjoy us, you know, here. We've had some really, some difficult, technical difficulties, and we think that that's some of the problem. So, if you do have a device you're using for Zoom, if you would turn it off, we would really appreciate it. Thank you. So, at this point, I'd like to ask for the city clerk to give us a roll call, please. Councilmember Barnett?
Here.
Councilmember Felder?
Here.
Vice Mardine?
Here.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, well, I think I already said this about the Zoom. At this point, we've described. I can't find the notes. Okay, sorry. So, at this point, we're at Public Comment Participation. And I've already announced about the Zoom. Oh, where is? Oh, it's not. Is it here? Oh, at the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I, I'm sorry. Before I go to that, we did not have a closed session, so there's nothing to report out. At this point now, I'd like to approve the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion for approve for the agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Felder?
Aye.
Vice Mardine?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, unless otherwise permitted under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for the council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name. Members of the public present in the chambers will be called first, and then those who are attending via Zoom will be called second. So, at this point, if anybody would like to, if you have a comment?
Thank you. Members of the council, my name is Mark Mezzetta. I have an office on 620 Broadway. And I've had it there for probably
Can we hear?
Three years. My last name is spelled M-E-Z-Z-E-T-T-A. And my first name is Mark, M-A-R-C. Is this all right? Okay, thanks. I just want to point out that, you know, I'd like to know whose town this is. It certainly isn't the city council's town. It's the citizens' town. And the city council's getting, just like the national government, you elect these people, they get there, they decide what they're going to do instead of what the public wants. And this particular situation on Broadway is not the first time. It's the second time. We have Fifth Street East that we don't like. And now, what you want to do is, you want to tear this, you want to change this to some, something that I consider to be more dangerous. And I've written a legal opinion on this to the, to Caltrans, that I've honestly believed this creates a more dangerous condition for the city than doing, leaving it the way it is. I don't want to see. One of the major problems we have there that I observe all the time is people speeding and going down that street with mufflers that make a great deal of noise. And I've spoke to the police department about it, and the highway patrol, and they can't do anything because nobody wants to enforce it. And the city council only has two police officers on duty at eight hours at a time. And so, nothing gets done. What I really believe we need there is we need a 25 mile an hour speed limit from the Plaza all the way down to Friedman's and back. And we need to put, we need to have a crosswalk at Andrews, Andrix and Broadway. And we need one down by Train Town where people cut across because they park there and they walk in the Train Town's fence. I think that those are the two things that we should do. And most of us don't want bicycles on Broadway. Who wants to invite more bicycles to come up the bit, one of the busiest roads that we have? It's just going to create more problems. Transition problems at the Plaza and then with all these restaurants sticking out. This, I see I'm running out of time. This, this plan should be deferred, and we ought to see what, what a reduction in speed limits, what that brings as well as stop signs and adequately marked crosswalks that really show up, other than the lights. It just, they're, they're hard to see on the ground. And I, I think that's what we should do first because that doesn't cost as much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for getting up and speaking.
Good evening, members of the city council. Can you hear me? I wanted to thank you and every other staff for dealing with the technical difficulties of meeting in person online. I know how, yeah, how difficult that is. So, I appreciate that. I, Matt Metzler, 1110 Friar Creek Drive. And I rode my bike to this meeting. I have a very efficient hybrid car parked in front of my house, but I chose to ride a bicycle instead. And the reason is because I feel like I'm doing a public service because I am not creating greenhouse gases to get to this meeting. And I was going to say other things, but I decided to change what I wanted to talk about because I really think the reason we don't, do not have more bicycles, more people using bikes to get around town in Sonoma is because of the lack of infrastructure. And the parking protected bike lane that you guys approved at a recent meeting is a critical piece of bicycle infrastructure in Sonoma. The city council has passed a climate emergency resolution. And I really appreciate the way the city council has acted on that resolution by taking a concrete action that will make it easier to bicycle around Sonoma. Native Americans have talked about a philosophy of thinking about seven generations ahead. Well, we need to think about future generations. Future generations will not look on us very kindly if we don't take more concrete action to make it easier not to create, add greenhouse gases to the atmosphere. Driving cars creates greenhouse gases unless everybody converts to electric vehicles. And we're not going to do that immediately. So, making it easier to bicycle and to get around without having to drive is a very important step to reducing our city's greenhouse gas pollution. I really think we need to do everything we can to make it safer for people who choose not to drive to get around town. And one of the best ways you guys can do that is by creating that parking protected bike lane. It will be safer once you reduce the traffic lanes on Broadway. Studies have shown that when there's only one lane, cars go slower. If there's two lanes, cars will go faster. So, we need to do everything we can to make it easier to not have to drive around Sonoma. So, I wanted to thank the city council for acting upon the climate emergency resolution and approving the parking protected bike lane on Broadway. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Michael Woods. I'm a resident of the city. My office address is at 846 Broadway. Good to see you. My client, Lat. 33 Capital, owns MacArthur Place Hotel and Spa. On August 12th, the planning commission considered the application of MacArthur Place for a conditional use permit and related approvals for 11 new guest rooms at its existing site. The application sought a waiver of the development code requirement for a residential component to the project. The city has granted four such waivers to MacArthur Place between 1997 and 2020. This waiver was sought in part because the long existing hotel use and its configuration are incompatible with residential development on this particular site. Staff supported granting the waiver and recommended approval. The planning commission approved the use permit and granted the requested waiver. But in return for granting the waiver, the commission required MacArthur Place to pay $1.1 million to the city's housing trust fund over time, $100,000 per room. This fee is in addition to the city's non-residential affordable housing impact fee of $15 per square foot, which alone totals $90,000 for this project. In determining the nature and amount of this ad hoc fee, the commission considered several factors, including the financial depth and balance sheet of J.P. Morgan Chase Funding, which owns 100% of Lat. 33 Capital, and the gross revenues the commission calculated would be generated by the new rooms. MacArthur Place fully supports the construction of additional housing in Sonoma and accordingly, decided not to appeal the planning commission's decision. It remains to be seen whether the economics of the project will allow it to move forward. In determining not to appeal, we do not indicate any concurrence in the imposition of this fee or its amount. We believe that the fee and the manner of its imposition raises significant legal issues and cast material uncertainty over the viability of future projects across the city. To be consistent in considering future waiver requests from other applicants, the commission will presumably be considering their net worth and anticipated gross revenues of their project. While the commission's determination to encourage new housing in the city is laudable and one which we fully support, these factors are not the basis for sound land use policy or the determination of a waiver fee on a case-by-case basis. The absence of clear, objective standards in the city's development code will leave many applicants uncertain of project economics until they arrive at their public hearing. We respectfully request that the city council direct staff to include in an update of the development code revisions to the standards applicable to waiver requests for the residential component requirement in the commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. In order to assure fairness and consistency, we also request that city staff and legal counsel work to determine how those revised standards will be made applicable to the MacArthur Place project. I'm providing you with a letter signed by me and by Michael Ross, who would like to speak next, followed by Joe Walsh from Lat. 33. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Michael. My name's Michael Ross. I'm an architect for MacArthur Place Hotel and principal at Ross Drillers Cusenberry Architecture here in Sonoma. We're located at 18294 Sonoma Highway in Boys' Hot Springs. I'm speaking from the point of view of a working architect who uses the development code virtually every day. And I attended the August 12th planning commission meeting. And when I left the meeting, I sort of had a bit of confusion about where the goalposts were relative to waivers for the housing component. As you may know, the development code currently has four circumstances where a waiver of the housing component could be granted by the planning commission. And after the August 12th meeting, it appears that there might be a fifth circumstance where an applicant can now purchase a waiver to the housing component, which would be free of land use considerations. And it would be as a way to augment the housing impact fee. And should this be the case, there could be now an economic incentive created for the planning commission not to consider a waiver request based on land use merit, but instead to favor imposing a fee to augment the housing trust fund out of an understandable concern for affordable housing in Sonoma, which we share. Should this be the city's intent, though, how should the fee be calculated? 37% of construction cost? That's what the fee was decided on, on August 12th. 55, $550,000 per each new employee? That was also kicked around that night. If so, these would be exorbitant costs for future projects in town and chilling to job creation and infill development in general. For example, the Sebastiani Theater will be applying for a use permit, which will include a request for a waiver of the housing component. The theater is located in a commercial zone on a lot larger than a half acre. If the land use issues are set aside, charging this nonprofit, the Sebastiani Theater Foundation, a 37% construction cost impact fee on top of what they are already paying for construction, or charging $550,000 per employee behind the candy counter, that would be a chilling effect on this project and really put it in an existential question about should, should it be viable? Professionally, I'm uneasy about where we are at the moment. There are already too many variables in my industry. It is difficult to create accurate budgets for our clients when the cost of fees is a moving target. I, I am certain other projects in town will be experiencing the same unease. And respectfully, we are requesting policy guidance from the city council to establish a fair and consistent methodology on how the housing component waiver process is implemented and if a fee is imposed, to establish a fair basis and amount of those fees. So, thank you very much for considering this message. And I appreciate all that you do for the city of Sonoma.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Good evening. My name is Joe Walsh. I'm the owner's representative for Lat. 33 Capital, the owner of MacArthur Place Hotel. I'm following up on the comments from Mr. Woods and Mr. Ross. I wanted to speak a little bit about the development project that we were approved by the planning commission last month. Prior to coming up with the project budget, we met with staff. We created a pre-development budget. And none of that included a $100,000 fee per key. So, you can imagine the surprise when our budget, in essence, had a construction budget of $3 million. And then, we reassessed an incremental fee, which we were unaware of, at 1.1 million, hitting the reference 37% of the construction budget on the project. In essence, we went from $275,000 per key to $375,000 per key. The planning commission, though, did say that that fee could be paid over a period of time. There are other benefits to our project other than the ownership's benefit. Currently, the hotel has 64 keys. With this project, we would add 11 additional rooms, bringing the hotel to 75 keys. By our financial pro forma, each of the additional 11 rooms would generate the incremental TOT for the city. We calculate that at the first full year of operation after construction at $300,000. That would go to the city's general fund under TOT dollars and community improvement development. So, I would just like to reiterate the comments from Mr. Woods and Mr. Ross. Our challenge is timing. I'm the project manager for the project. The company has not decided whether to go forward with the project or not. And our request is to revise or to review the code so that staff could come up with the appropriate amount to pay for the waiver. And we would like that to be retroactively applied to our project. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Do I have anyone else who would like to approach?
Amy Harrington, 235 East Napa Street. I hadn't planned to talk about this item, but since it came up, I thought I would. So, just as a reference to the MacArthur Place, the city council previously considered whether or not they would create an ability to not build units by doing an in-loof fee. They decided not to do that and instead to force the building of them. And so, my understanding about the project in question, and I should say, I love MacArthur Place. It's a beautiful hotel, and they're doing a wonderful job there, was that they did not want to build the units. And they also wanted some negotiations to take place in order to be able to move their project forward on that night. And I would say, to the extent that they did not want to comply with the rules of the city, which are, there are no ways to get around it. There is no way to pay for it. And so, you need to build the housing. Since that wasn't an option, it sounds like the planning commission did do some on-the-fly negotiation. But the alternative is not to say that they pay a lower fee. It's to say that their project isn't approved unless they build the housing. And so, I think, just in terms of what the fees are, for quick reference, I looked at San Francisco. And if you're building them off-site, for example, or you're paying into a fund, you need to pay the equivalent of the cost of 30, 30% to 33% of the units to the city. The, whatever it costs to build other units, you need to pay the equivalent of 1/3 to the city to cover not actually building the units yourself. So, I think, I agree that there should be a policy if the city council is going to change directions and allow people to not build housing, which is against the current policy of the city council. But if they don't, then the housing has to be built and the waiver shouldn't be granted. So, I think the planning commission was trying to find a way to accommodate the needs of MacArthur Place on the fly in order to allow their project to move forward, which I think was a valiant effort, not to just get money for the trust fund, but to find a way to not force them to build the housing, which it sounds like they didn't want to build because it wasn't in conformity with their project, so.
Thank you so much for speaking. You smiled to my face.
Good evening. I'm Scott Sherman. I live at 762 Broadway. S-H-E-R-M-A-N, Sherman. I'm just saying, please don't restripe Broadway. There are a lot of reasons to not do it. And it would be seriously mistaken. It would have, we are not Denmark, and people do drive cars. And we need to have parking on the side of the road. We're not going to solve the global issues by ruining the access to businesses and sidewalks on Broadway. We're going to have elderly people entering the fastest lane of a state highway. It's extremely dangerous. It'll drive traffic into all the side roads, creating even more hazardous conditions all throughout the, the city. And I'd like to take a moment of remembrance for Wendy Mitchell, who was, she died last week, or last month, after, 12 years after having received a concussion from a bicycle on Broadway. The city paid a quarter of a million dollars because they, and they didn't even enforce the rules of no driving at night without a light, et cetera. Very sore issue. So, I'd like to take 30 seconds in memory of Wendy Yvonne Mitchell. Please do not restripe Broadway. Leave it the way it is, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other people who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Christina Kennedy, and I live at 2157 Thornsberry. And I'm proposing that we have a sign put up at the duck pond at the park, at the square, that says, well, there's one like this that's for sale. And it says, "Thank you for not feeding us bread." And it's to stop people from feeding the ducks bread. And the reason why is because, well, myself and a lot of other people on a thread on the Nextdoor app are concerned about feeding ducks food that's not good for them. It causes diseases. It gives them something that's called wing drop. It's very, they can't fly. It draws rats and other animals. And it's just very unhealthy for them. And this is a really nice sign. And I spoke with Anthony Navarro from the Parks Commission, and I offered to buy the sign myself. It's not very expensive. And he said that he was very much in favor. And he was the one that suggested that I come and speak here and that if it gets approved, then they can put the sign up. So, I'm just offering that up. So, I don't know if you want a copy of this. I just took a picture of it.
Thank you so much for speaking.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Peterson. I live at 842 Austin Avenue. Been here for past 50 years. Served on the volunteer fire department for 13 years, gold badge member. And had, did serve a brief stint on the traffic commission in the city. And what I seen, of course, we all seen the traffic congestion we're dealing with now. And trying to get out of town at this point, like 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock, 5:30, almost impossible. And it looks to me like what you're going to do with Broadway would be doing the similar thing. Going to back up traffic tremendously. And the idea of parallel parking in a single-lane highway doesn't make sense to me. So, I would like you to keep the existing situation as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening. My name's Jim Karabochos. That's K-A-R-A-B-O-C-H-O-S. October 2015, a woman was hit in the crosswalk on East Napa Street by Union Bank. No action taken on this. October 6, 2016, a 70-year-old man was struck and hit, hit and run at Broadway and Andrix. No action taken on this. April of this year, the pedestrian was hit by a car in Broadway and Andrix and while the walking dog, and the dog died. A stop single signal is needed A stop signal, signal is needed at Broadway and Andricks intersection, why? This would make it safer for pedestrians and cars, it would improve traffic control on Broadway, and yes, money can be found for the light. At the meeting of August 2nd, the city council omitted discussing anything about local merchants, residents living on Broadway, or even emergency units of leased fire ambulances. The whole conversation was bike lane, bike lane, one-way traffic in each direction. Your local merchant pays the city business license sales tax along with high rents to property owners, now you're taking away the curbside parking form. All the property owners on Broadway pay their share of property tax to the citizens of Sonoma as well. With parallel parking, it will hold up traffic, and most of the people will use the middle turn lane for, as a passing lane. When traffic comes, becomes a waiting line, different times of the day, well, welcome to the neighborhood, where you can now use their streets. Just remember, this is not dress rehearsal, it's the real thing, if it doesn't work out, too bad, because you, the public, are stuck with Plan B.
Thank you, Mr. Karabochos.
I'm Mary Ommitt, I live at 673 First Street West, and I'm here to talk about, actually, I think, senior safety, I do share the, the walking path, the bike path, with bikes, and frankly, it terrifies me. If I can see them coming, I get off the bike path, if I hear them behind me, the same thing. I'm sure most bike riders are very safe, some are simply not, and they, they drive in a crazy way. So the idea of crossing a bike path to get to a business or to a friend's home, frankly, terrifies me, and I hope you don't do it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ommich. Is there anyone else who would like to rise? Seeing none, do we have Zoom comment?
Hello?
Yes, Fred, you can go.
Okay, thank you very much, I would like to second Matt Metzler's comments, and I'd also like to say that Matt had a really nice shirt on tonight. As far as the Broadway restriping, I think the city council is elected to provide judgment and make hard calls for all the public good, and not to react hot messages on Facebook for people who, in large part, aren't showing up to meetings. This single-issue hot messages are frequently overblown emotional and anecdotal appeals, and I think council members need a wider view of the big picture. Accidents can happen all over, you need to base any decisions on actual police data and not on what people are saying here. And big-picture issues, critical issues for Sonoma are climate and housing, so I'd like to ask you to please put your attention on those issues. In regard to Michael Wood's comment about the MacArthur waiver, Michael wants it to be fair, so I think that it is fair that, that developers pay a similar amount to what MacArthur is paying, and so I think that this should become the new policy, I agree with this. And with Michael Ross's comment about changing the goalposts, I think that the hospitality and tourism industry needs to pull its fair weight, and this is what needs to be codified, and that's where the goalpost needs to be. The idea that JP Morgan doesn't have the money is ludicrous to me, and so I think the big picture here is that the extreme wealth in Sonoma, these folks can afford it. The new inclusionary ordinance didn't shield DeNoble from applying for a fifty-five-unit project, so I think there's buku money to be made here, and that a good shakedown by the city is justified for the, for getting money for affordable housing, and I agree a hundred percent with Amy Harrington's argument to build the housing, so those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
This is Tricia Smith at 1404 Old Winery Court, directly across from a home that was purchased by Picasso in May, and they in turn are reselling as a timeshare, eight fractional shares, forty-four days, for six-hundred-and-six thousand plus the starting eighteen-thousand annual fee, literally a timeshare in our small nine-home cul-de-sac. So we are just outside the city limits, but appreciate your support and understanding that they could easily be in the city limits soon. This did happen in St. Helena, where they purchased five flipped homes, homes that were in the million-dollar range, affordable by families right downtown, they were flipped by one company, and all were sold to Picasso for three times the price. They are totally ignoring the timeshare law in St. Helena, and turned around and sued the city, the city attorney, the city manager, and the mayor, they are litigious bullies. It is good to know they have lost the first count in the federal court, the slap suit, and we invite you to read more about it at our website, stoppicassonow.com. So we have received a good deal of national attention now, most recently NPR Planet Money, and also a hundred thousand views on the Young Turks YouTube channel, which I knew nothing about before this, I'm learning a lot, as are my neighbors. So they have five million subscribers to this YouTube channel, and they did an excoriating, just really blasted what this all means for the common person, and we invite you to come to our website, stoppicassonow, and view all of that, we have every article that's been written in the library there, and also all of the videos, so thank you for your attention to it, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
We have David Eichar.
Hi, David Eichar, E-I-C-H-A-R, and so, a couple things, one is, I just did a quick search, protected bike lanes and their safety, and I came up with a few, and one of them is on sf.streetblogs.org, it says, "The Oakland Department of Transportation study affirms protected bike lanes, bike lanes are safest." And so I think in terms of determining whether the Broadway restriping is safe, you should take a look at studies and also experts in traffic safety, that would be the way to go. Next, let's talk about the MacArthur Place, I think they got off easy, because it probably should have paid twice as much, should have paid the cost of actually building the housing. And as for the TOT, you know, they decided, well, how much additional TOT they would get, well, that TOT is going to come at the expense of other hotels in the area, and, and also could be a reduced TOT, because you have competition, and actually, it's, that happened once over in, oh, it's got the name of the city of Napa, where they had a lot of hotel rooms, and the TOT dropped one year. Now, conversely, maybe they're right, maybe they will have more guests, more people into Sonoma. What does that mean? That means more people traveling, more greenhouse gas emissions, more airplane travels from around the country and around the world, and anytime a EIR, or any other SEQA looking into the environmental impacts, should take into account the entire trip of this. So if indeed, they are receiving more guests into Sonoma, then it's a more of an environmental impact that needs to be either mitigated, or if it not, cannot be mitigated, then the project should not be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eichar.
Next, we have Tom Conlin.
Thank you, Mayor Aggermonte, members of the council and the public. I think we should be proud of our little city tonight with this, with this diverse and robust public, public process we see playing out in front of us. I think that the people who have expressed concerns about safety, I'm glad to hear the concerns about safety along Broadway, it touches me as well. I invite those folks who do feel concerns about the bicycle solution the city has carefully considered and decided to implement, I invite those folks to come to the planning meetings that are held every month, hosted by the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. The Citizens Advisory Committee meets every fourth Monday of the month, online, or you can attend in person, hopefully, in the future, and the, that's the first, the fourth Monday, and the fourth Tuesday, the Citizens Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee of the Transportation Authority meet. I, I had many of the same kinds of views before I began to participate in that process, and realize that's, that these protected bike lanes and slowing traffic down really are the way to make our city more safe, and I do believe it will actually make this town more attractive to tourists and residents alike, and it will, it will, we'll be much happier once this is all built. And I would just close by saying, I, I think that the, I'm very gratified that the LAP-33 team has chosen not to appeal at this point. I do think Amy Harrington explained the, the long process that the city's gone through, and we're not going to be issuing these waivers willy-nilly. They, the other point I would just hasten to make, is that when the employees come to service these additional, in this case, eleven rooms, they will, they will need a place to live the day they start work, and if the money's been placed in the city's housing fund, it won't necessarily, that housing unit won't necessarily be there for them yet. So if they had built the housing at the same time onsite, those housing units could be available for those employees to live in. And so I think the, the planning commission and the city have considered this carefully, and I think we should be proud of the policies that we have set here in the city at this point. Thank you for your consideration, my comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin. Okay, thank, I'd like to thank everyone here, and also tuning in on Zoom, I appreciate your time, and I value your, what you have offered us. Go back a step into dedications on our agenda, I would like to dedicate this evening to Robert Parmaly, passed away, he was ninety-two years old, he passed away on August 30th. You know, he has a long and rich history here in, in Sonoma, he, let's see, was born in San Francisco, March 18, 1929, and he also graduated from my alma mater, Balboa High School, we're not known for much, but thank you, Mr. Parmaly. Although I will say, you know, we were the first person to have an off-trip, off, I think, out of the United States, off-track betting person, he was in Dominica Republic, he was also in sixty, on Sixty Minutes, so that's one of our other claims to fame, the gambling person. But I'd like to say that Mr. Parmaly enrolled in Berkeley's Bolt Law School, he was an attorney here in Sonoma, he received his law degree in 1956, upon graduation, Parmaly, his wife Nancy, and their little boy Mark, the first of three children, moved to Santa Rosa. When he then moved to Sonoma, a law firm with Judge Ray Grinstead, who was a very popular person, has a wonderful history here, the office was on First Street East, and he and Mr. Grinstead and his wife Emily Poppy, which had administered the estate of General Mariano Valleo, at that time, Mr. Parmaly encountered an amazing treasure of finding all the historical information for the city of Sonoma, which I thought was absolutely amazing. He's just a great guy, and he was known as, it was known as the Parmaly Collection, and I just wanted to let you know that he is, he left behind his wife, of course, Nancy, son Mark, wife Katie, Laurie, Janine, her husband's Philip, and I believe grandchildren, Jay, Megan, Jaren, and Elaine Scott. And I think others here on this council would like to say a few words about Mr. Parmaly, he is going to be deeply missed, and he has made a big change here in Sonoma for all of us, thank you.
Mr. Parmaly's path is a loss for our whole community, especially, I want to mention, he wrote the book Pioneer Sonoma, and the numerous historical articles for newspapers and magazines. Bob was instrumental in creating the recent film Call of the Valley, enduring lore of Sonoma, by contributing his collection and knowledge. I watched this movie twice, every time when I went to Sebastiani and the theater, all in the full house. In addition to Sonoma history, Bob had a love over the trains since childhood, he wrote in several magazines articles on the history of the train and the Parmaly transfer in Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to obviously add that the city council will miss Bob Parmaly, I want to extend my condolences to Nancy, his wife, who is a former mayor and council member, and I just wanted to say, just as, you know, Bob Parmaly learned about the great Sonomans of the past, future generations of Sonomans will know about Bob Parmaly.
Thank you so much. We're moving on to consent agenda, the consent calendar, all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be acted upon by a single motion, there will be no separate discussions of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed from separate, for secret, separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda.
I'd like to pull item 4.2, please.
All right. Is there any other request? Jack? No? Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'd like to take it out to the public. If there's anyone who would like to comment on the consent agenda, on the consent calendar. Is there anyone from Zoom? The world of Zoom.
Fred Alabak.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, I'd also like to pull agenda item 4.2, just to make sure that I have a chance to ask a question about it.
All right. Is there anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, so I'm, at this point, I think, oh, we've gone out to the public, okay. So I'd like a motion, if we could have a motion to approve what we are not, what we are not pulling.
I'll make a motion to approve 4.1, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5.
I second.
And may I have a roll call, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Felder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
We're going back to 4.2 for discussion.
Yes. May I go? Or, yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I pulled this item from the agenda, I had a few questions, I don't know, would I ask the city manager, the planning director, or?
I think, would you like a staff report first, from the planning director?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, can you hear me okay? I'm using this thing. Yeah, okay, can you hear me okay? All right, this is kind of awkward, but the settlement and release agreement talks about the processing of three revised applications, terminology that you'll see in the SRA, we'll call it, and with respect to SEQA, you can turn to section eight, that talks about the city using its best efforts within a forty-five-day period in which to prepare an RFP for an environmental consultant, and to actually award a contract or, with that environmental consultant that's selected. So we prepared the RFP, sent it out for three weeks, and we sent it to seven firms, and received one proposal from AECom for $252,000, and upon receipt, we sent that to the applicant who provided us with comments verbally through, by saying that they were not interested in having us pursue that contract, primarily because the applicant felt there was a problem with it, and that the RFP did not include the possibility that the projects could be categorically exempt from SEQA. So notwithstanding the fact that we attempted to get as many as we could, we did only receive that one. In the second RFP process, we sent it out to an additional two consultants at the request of the applicant, to a total of nine firms, and again, received only one proposal for $188,000. I would point out that both the AECom and the DUDAC proposal both had about a one-year timeline when it comes to the actual preparation and the presentation of that determination about what environmental review to take, which would, in the second RFP, include the possibility that the outcome would be, could be a categorical exemption. The applicant communicated to us verbally that they were okay with that particular contract, and as I said, we received just the one, it was not the prior, it was from DUDAC, which is before you this evening. Under, in the RFP, for the seven firms, that was also done, we believe, consistent with the SRA, but it was after the forty-five-day period that's outlined in the settlement and release agreement. The applicant, to be clear, will be paying for the full cost of the processing, we believe that AECom is no longer interested in pursuing, that's why, again, another reason why we went through the second process. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution to contract with DUDAC at this time, available for questions, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry, you want, do you have more questions?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
I don't have, I haven't asked any.
Oh, I.
Oh, yeah. It's okay, yeah, all right.
I'm still working on breathing.
That's, well, that's important. My first question is, obviously, this push to go out for environmental review is a result of the settlement agreement. I was not aware there was a settlement agreement until I read the staff report, and I didn't see the settlement agreement until 3:30, and I have not read it, because I didn't have time, obviously, before the meeting, so I guess... So I guess my first question is, is this settlement agreement a public document? Is, who wants to answer that?
Yes, it is, and it actually was approved in public, uh, a number of months ago, I think in, uh, March, April, or May. The date of the agreement itself is, uh, what is the agreement?
So when was it approved?
It was approved by the council in open public session somewhere around in April of this year.
Okay. I will check on that. If someone else could tell me when, it might be easier for me. Thank you.
Might have been March. I see some of the signatures are signed in March. March, February.
And this was approved in a public city council meeting?
Yes.
Um, because I, I think I've been on the council since March first, and if I've missed this, then I, I don't remember, I don't remember this. But, so I would love to see when. So that's question one. Number two, um, it sounds like, so there was a difference between the RFPs? David?
The applicant felt that the first one that we sent out to seven proposer, uh, firms was inaccurate, that it didn't include all options on the SEQA. Uh, we had prepared it with an eye towards having a NECDAC or an EIR prepared, and the applicant, uh, wanted it to say that that was, uh, focusing a consultant in a certain direction and would like to have the RFP include the possibility that the environmental consultant, uh, could opt, opt or recommend to staff in the city that a categorical exemption might be an appropriate tool on the SEQA, and, uh, that, um, that was a failure of the first RFP.
Is that part of the settlement agreement, that he gets to decide how the planning department wants to conduct environmental review?
I do not believe it is correct.
Another question I have is, in the staff report, it said that the projects have yet to be submitted?
Yes, these would be the three revised applications. Um, in the SRA, it outlines that, I believe, there's no timeline on when the applicant submits those, but within forty-five days of the effective date of the agreement, we had to retain an environmental consultant.
Those are my questions for now. I may have further comments, but those are my, I may have more questions, but those are my questions for now. Perhaps some, someone else has other questions?
Are there?
I'd like to review the settlement agreement.
Any other questions? Jack? Thank you.
I attend our closer section for setup of the deal with a developer. My question is, have we already received a fifty thousand dollars contribution to our affordable housing trust fund?
No, the, the, uh, contribution, or excuse me, payment, I don't want to use the contribution word, um, is to be paid at a point in time, uh, when the applicant submits for building permits. And assuming the three revised, uh, the revised application's been approved, let's say, that the next step in the process would be to obtain building permits, they're to pay that money to the housing trust fund, uh, the fifty thousand dollars. Um, and if they do not proceed with building permits, it's upon the expiration, uh, of the ability to pull building permit, uh, which is typically a hundred and eighty days or something like that after the entitlements are granted, that they have a certain period of time to submit for building permits. So with, there's, whether they do or don't, they'll be owing that money, uh, excuse me, they'll be paying the money at one point, uh, regardless of, you know, with them being approved.
So accordingly, I assume this lawsuit case has not been dismissed at this time?
That is correct. I'll let Jeff respond to that.
That is correct. The lawsuit is still pending. Um, the settlement agreement contemplated the parties going to the court and asking that the court issue a stay order, staying the lawsuit, putting it in the back burner while the petitioners, Mr. Jasper and his colleagues, reapply for these three housing projects that are downsized from the projects that were denied by the council a number of years ago. The court declined to stay the lawsuit and simply scheduled a case management conference, um, in December of this year, just to keep tabs on how the parties are doing. That was the desire of the judge, not to let go of this case entirely and allow him to basically review the progress of the applications.
Thank you.
But once, the, the overall objective of this settlement agreement is to give Mr. Jasper and his colleagues an opportunity to process downsized projects, residential projects on, on the three parcels in question, to have those projects examined under SEQA, um, a renewed examination, not borrowing from the past and not relying on the past SEQA analysis that was done. Some of that information can be utilized by the new environmental consultant, um, and tonight is the opportunity for the council to approve that EIR consultant's agreement. And that consultant will then conduct its review independently, um, uninfluenced, not influenced by the applicant nor the council, and come back with recommendations. The city then has the power to accept those recommendations or not. Um, that's also built into the settlement agreement. But as we know, SEQA must be completed and the document must be approved before the council can actually act on the projects themselves. The settlement document also contemplates that the projects will be processed and heard by the council only and not by the commission. That was one of the deal points that the, uh, petitioners insisted upon as part of settling this case. Assuming the process followed, and at the end of the day, the council approves a project with conditions that the developer accepts, then the lawsuit will be dismissed. If there is litigation brought against the council's approval of these three projects, Mr. Jasper has agreed to defend the city and indemnify the city for its costs and legal expenses in that litigation, if it occurs. If it doesn't, uh, then Mr. Jasper can apply for building permits, at which time, uh, he's required to pay the city fifty thousand dollars to go into the housing trust fund.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Again, I assume after today, tonight, if we approved this project, and then that we will not have any additional legal liability and continuously pay the legal fees on this specific case. Is that right?
Yes, if the council ultimately approves this project, the project's not before the council tonight. The only thing that's before the council is a contract.
Yes.
To hire the SEQA consultant to engage in the SEQA analysis. That's all that's before the council tonight.
That is right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But if at the end of the road, probably a number of months, probably next year, at the earliest, this comes before the council again for project approval, you are right, Councilmember Ding, that if the council approves the project in a way that the developer accepts, then the developer will step forward and indemnify the city if anybody challenges that decision by the council. That's part of the settlement agreement.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnett?
I have further questions, but Bob has it answered.
Let me just, uh, come in. First of all, I'd like to kind of hitchhike on something that, uh, Councilmember Barnett, uh, mentioned about the, uh, environmental review. I find it somewhat disingenuous for us to be in a position where the only, uh, submittal by a consultant was, uh, by someone recommended by the app, uh, by the developer. Uh, and we are failing to, to provide, uh, adequate choice of three different consultants. I realize that we weren't getting things submitted, but I think this rush to action and to take, uh, the recommendation of, of the person who wants to develop this project is, is, uh, at least, uh, suspect in my eyes. A second thing is that, uh, it seems to be that we're, uh, I realize we have, uh, terms of a settlement agreement that require us to, to try to hire an environmental consultant within a certain time period, but it seems to be, uh, difficult to ask that consultant to do a job when there's no, uh, application sitting before the, uh, the city at this point. So he has nothing to, to base his, his, this, his environmental review on if he doesn't have a project in front of him. I guess I would ask the planning director if this is unusual to proceed in this direction. So if I could go, Mr., Madam, Madam Mayor, if I could, uh, answer Councilmember Felder's questions, I'll start with the first comment, uh, and I apologize, I probably wasn't as clear as I should be. We, the city staff, selected the seven firms that the first RFP was sent to. As a result of that, uh, communication from the applicant that they did not want to select AECom because of the price perhaps, and only getting one, they submitted two additional names to us to add to those seven, where we sent out the, the second RFP to nine people and only got one back. So, and it was not from either of the two that they had submitted to us. So that, just to point a clarification there, on the timing of the, um, the, the case in point was to get the consultant ready to go such that when the revised applications were submitted, we weren't then waiting for a point to start at that point. So they were not going to be doing any work, but they certainly were aware of the, the projects that were likely to come in and that their day one would start once those applications, revised applications were submitted. One more, one more question. On the, uh, the content of the revised applications, uh, I am concerned that, uh, I realize we, we only had some changes to the development code in draft form or with definitions that would apply to hillside development, and so it was necessary to put specifics in the settlement agreement that would cover this particular project. But it's, uh, very concerning to me that, uh, instead of, uh, what, uh, our city attorney has referred to a downsized project, that in one of the three, uh, proposals for one of the, the sites, that, uh, it is grossly inconsistent with the, uh, interpretation that I have seen in the development code about a limitation on, on the pad size grading of five thousand feet when the settlement agreement allows them ten, uh, pardon me, eleven thousand feet. And, uh, that seems to be something that, uh, should have been more, uh, in tune with whatever revised application was submitted and, and what it might, uh, look like to, to reduce the size, but this, this is not a reduction in size on that one lot. So I'm, I'm concerned that that, that ties us into a settlement agreement that's, uh, really not consistent with what we hoped the development code is going to produce.
Mr. Felder, are you, you're, you're finished with your comments?
Yeah.
And questions?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did the first RFP, what did the first RFP say? You, you sent it out to eight different consultants, and you asked for an environmental impact report?
No, we, we asked for a consultant that could review future to be submitted revised applications, uh, toward the preparation of either a negative declaration or an EIR. We were past, the thinking was, is that the project had initially been reviewed with a NECDAC that was then challenged, and so it didn't seem necessary, in my view and staff's view, to go back to allow a categorical exemption. The question would be, would even a negative declaration be the, the tool to be used? Without trying to figure out what it would be, the point would be, let's do an initial study to determine if an EIR is necessary, and if an EIR is not necessary, then you would then defer to a NECDAC if the findings for that could be made, but did not want to foreclose the option of either a NECDAC, mitigated NECDAC, or an EIR, but that the initial study would inform us of that. And that was the tool that we were asking them to prepare, not going through SEQA to figure out if a CAT exemption would be appropriate because of the prior context.
And that was in the first RFP?
That was the first RFP, whereas the second one included for the applicant.
Right.
The option that a consultant could suggest or recommend to staff. Again, remember, but the, the determination by the environmental consultant is not binding on staff nor the city council.
But.
It would, it would be something that we would have to agree to, that, yes, the CAT exemption would, could apply. The likelihood of that, in my view professionally, is that it would not apply, but I'm not going to.
So, so you didn't include the CAT X on the first RFP because you thought it was?
That is correct.
Correct. And, um, and, and the planning director has the authority, I know there are other projects in Sonoma's past, that you can, right off the bat, if, if this is your determination, this is going to require an EIR, you don't have to go through that process, right? You can just say, this is the type of project that is so sensitive, it may need an EIR, period, correct?
And that will be the discussion I have with the environmental consultant, because the whole purpose of SEQA is to get to the need of, I, correctly identifying the environmental impacts. You can dis, dismiss the need for initial study, you can just jump straight to an EIR.
Correct.
But at this point, that determination's not been made, simply because we haven't seen the revised applications yet.
Okay, okay, so we don't have applications yet, we're, okay. Another point, um, so this is what I'm hearing, and so correct me if I'm wrong, but you, as the planning director, said that this level of environmental review is probably going to be necessary, did not include the CAT X, got, I assume AECom is a reputable firm. You got a bid for how much? Two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
Two fifty-two, yes.
And the applicant said he didn't want to pay that?
That is correct.
And so then, the applicant who has sued our city, you modified the RFP per his direction and now have one that is, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars less? Is that what happened?
Per, per his request, not direction. Um, I had to consider the request, and, um, then we proceeded forward with a second RFP to include the categorical exemption option, if you will.
Mm-huh.
Because obviously, there's always the option for him to say, game over, I'm going to pursue with litigation. So, in the spirit of working together, we went out for the second RFP and expanded it to nine firms and got the same result from the first.
And when you, and you, when you put the RFP out, is it a public, is it on a website? Or do you send them directly to firms you're aware of?
We sent it to the firms we're aware of. Did we also post it to?
Has, has the developer contacted or had any communication with either the first firm or the second firm?
Christina could probably answer that. I believe there was with AECom.
So the developer is directly communicating with consultants?
I believe that happened in the first one. Christine, can you?
Yeah, I can comment. The, um, first of all, if I could just elaborate a little bit, the approach, the issue with the applicant, it wasn't necessarily about the, about the price, it was about the approach in the, in the proposal from AECom.
Mm-huh.
So AECom's recommendation was to only do an EIR, and at this point, we don't have an application to act on. We have tech studies from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, so it was a really complicated RFP to write because we don't have a project before us, so that it's a multiple level step. The first level is looking at the existing tech studies, doing peer review, determining what additional tech studies might be needed. Then it's doing an initial study and writing a memo to the city. So it's a little bit more complicated than just if we had a project and do the EIR.
So at that point, the developer directly communicated with the consultant?
Which we.
How did that happen?
I, I am not aware of how that happened.
Okay, that's fine.
But as a, as a result, AECom withdrew from the proposal process.
Okay. And so my last question, I guess this is probably for Jeff, um, fifty percent of our council, soon to be sixty percent of our council, um, did, would, did not participate in the settlement agreement. I assume it's binding on successors? Um, how, how does that all work?
It is binding on successors.
And then before this agenda item is over, I would love to know when this was approved in public session, because I can't find it. Do we know that yet? Yes?
February first.
February the first.
February first, okay. Thank you.
I think it's important to note, too, on the issue of timing that Councilmember Felder raised, um, the settlement agreement requires the city to use its best efforts to actually hire an environmental consultant within forty-five days after the effective date. The effective date was early April. That was the last day a party signed this document, and we're way beyond that. And in part, the delay is due to Mr. Jasper himself. He didn't, he didn't like the first go around with the RFP, he thought the RFP was too narrow. He wanted a broader scope, as you've been told. Delay hurts him, doesn't really hurt the city. Costs are going up dramatically, we all know that. So delay hurts him, and he wasn't quite sure, in my view, how much the second round would end up costing him. There was no guarantee what the bids might be. So yes, it is less than the first bidder, but DUDAC is well-respected, we've used DUDAC in the past for other environmental documents on other projects. We need to remind ourselves that these consultants are not the developers' consultants, even though the developers may recommend them, and sometimes they do. They are the cities. The consultant enters, enters an agreement with the city, so they are our consultant. We control them. And there's actually a provision in the settlement agreement that says our standard practice will be followed when it comes to the. practice will be followed when it comes to the developer actually contacting the consultant once the consultant has been retained. And our standard of practice is, the applicants are typically not allowed to weigh in on what the consultant wants to do, or is doing, and determinations that it makes. In this particular agreement also, the city council is also prohibited from attempting to influence the decision making of this environmental consultant. In terms of the limitations of the size of these projects, they are less than what was proposed by the developer in the original applications. The 11,000 square feet is less than what was originally proposed and denied by the council several years ago. That was carefully examined, it was exhaustively negotiated, we went back and forth, back and forth on what the ceiling would be on the size of these projects, and the numbers that are reflected in this document are clearly a reduction in size. If it had not been a reduction in size, this document would never have been approved by that council, I guarantee you that. We have a document in front of us that sets forth a framework, the council that approved it thought it was reasonable, I think it was reasonable, I recommended it, the city council actually retained special counsel, Dolores Dalton, to litigate this case, she did a very good job. And this, this agreement, I think, is, is, has set the council up for a process that even if you deny the project, these revised projects, or condition it in a way that Mr. Jasper does not like, this agreement says he can't sue the city. He can't sue the city. I'm going to say again, he cannot sue the city if you deny his revised projects. Have you ever heard of such a thing? That's one of the real gems of this settlement document. I, I recommend that we move tonight and hire DUDAC, they've been retained by the city before, they're a reputable company, they are the city's consultant, and we actually don't have to follow the recommendation. The council has the ultimate power to determine what environmental document you think is appropriate for these projects.
So are we, are there any money, any other comments or questions? None, so I will now take it out to the public.
Amy Harrington, 235 East Napa Street. I have a number of comments as one of the people who was the chief negotiators on this matter. Number one, I think that the city council should be outraged by the staff report, because the information that was given tonight is not what was in the staff report, first of all. The staff report said that three proposals had to be received, and if you read the, the actual agreement, that's not true. So I don't know if that was purposely misleading, intellectually dishonest, I have a lot of strong words about it, but the agreement says that the, it shall solicit proposals from at least three environmental consultants. So the idea that they told you in a city council packet that you, that they went out for a second RFP because there weren't enough proposals because it was required in the settlement agreement, is simply not true. That's dishonest. The truth is, Bill Jasper, who never should have had any authority in picking the consultant under the terms of the agreement or how anything is supposed to work in this city, told you he didn't want the one you were going to pick, and so you went out and did a new RFP without telling the city council and got a new consultant and the other one dropped out. It's outrageous. This was one of the biggest issues in the entire city of Sonoma, and the fact that the packet does not contain the settlement agreement, it does not contain the RFP, the first or the second, it does not contain the proposal of either, and it did not contain the super important information, which is that you did a second RFP because Bill Jasper asked you to, not because the settlement agreement requires it, is an outrage. After all of the time and money we spent negotiating this settlement for you to come back and write a dishonest report, and I am saying that, like, I was shocked when I read it and compared it to the agreement, that you are purposely misleading the city council, three of whom were not part of this settlement agreement, negotiations in earnest, blows my mind. The second thing I would say, Mr. Felder, is that under the terms of the settlement agreement, the city council still retains their right to vote against the project at the end of the day if they don't agree with it. And so the settlement was that on the upper two lots, which are visible from the street, they would stay to the 5,000 square foot limit, and that on the lower one, which is less visible, we would allow for an expanded space there in order to settle the litigation. But at the time that this project comes back in front of you, nothing in the settlement agreement says that you have to vote for it. You don't have to vote for it, and there's nothing in it that binds you to vote for the ultimate agreement. But I just think, as a city council who hired this staff, who relies on this staff to have a report that doesn't tell the truth and doesn't include the pertinent documents on one of the biggest issues of the last four years, blows my mind.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Do we have any, oh, do you have anyone from Zoom? We do, you may invite them in.
Tom Conlin.
Comments that, former council member, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Tom.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm hearing a little bit of an echo myself. I just wanted to say I absolutely support the former speaker's comments. I, I have myself been struggling to keep up with this discussion, looking for a citation. I'm confused by the, the resolution, the resolution in front of you tonight, the third whereas bullet states that the city entered into the agreement on April 14th, 2021. I, I just simply have scanned all of the agendas in that range of time, and I believe I heard that it was approved in February, February 1st, but again, that would be before the settlement agreement was actually signed. So I, I think we need to establish the timeline, and if that can't be done tonight, then we should remove this matter from tonight's agenda and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin.
Next, we have Fred Olivak.
Good evening again, I would like to ask the city attorney if he could recap the key issues of this project here for the public benefit. It's, it's been a while since this has come up, and it was on the consent calendar, so I think that it would be good for the public and for my own curiosity to, to just recap what some of the key issues were in this process here, like about the pad size and the lot size, et cetera, just so people can kind of know some of the backstory of how we got here tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have David Iker.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, David Iker, my unmute button went away and then came back. Anyway, I do have to agree with Amy, and I find this in some ways to be, in terms of the staff report, lacking in a number of staff reports in terms of information not provided, misinformation forwarded from applicants, and in this case, I asked, you know, I couldn't find the, the settlement agreement. So I sent off email last night, I sent it off to the planning director, the associate planner, the city manager, and the city clerk. Please forward me the settlement agreement. I heard nothing back from any of them, all four of them, and I knew it was short notice, and that's why I sent it off to four people, hoping that at least one of them could get back to me. And so it's very difficult to come up and comment on something where you don't have all the information. And so I, you know, and we're taking a long time to provide this information now that could have been included in the staff report. Now, back to the merits of this, it's, it's kind of like we have to play the hand we are now dealt with. So this is what we have. I am concerned about some of the things in the settlement, with concern that it's going to go to this, the city council and not to the planning commission. However, though, right now we've got to form our planning commissioners on the city council, at least until next, probably early December after the next election. So that's a plus, but of course, if it's heard before then, you only have four city council members, if it's heard after then, then you don't have the expertise on the planning. So I'm torn whether or not to support going forward with this. It sounds like some of the provisions that are in the settlement are good, like can't sue the city, that's, that's great, but I just did not have time to go over it, not even receiving it. I did find it while waiting, February 1st, it's there. But anyway, I think you have tough decision right now, and I just hope in the future that this type of thing doesn't happen again, that the staff reports are complete and accurate information to the city council, the planning commission, to all the commissions, to have all the information, and not also just side with the developer, but give the decision making bodies the information they need, the entire information, to make the decision where it belongs at the commission or city council level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin.
Next, you have Sheila O'Neill.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Aggermonte, I'm outraged. I pulled up the February 1st meeting, the video, the agenda to take a look and see, did I miss this somehow? And there is actually an agenda item under the closed session, and when the council meeting began, Mayor Harvey asked Jeff Walters to provide a report. Jeff said, council took no action requiring reporting at this time. If there is some kind of settlement agreement, it's not public, none of us have seen it, and this is completely disrespectful to the appellants of this Shock and Hill project and to the community that worked tirelessly to defend Shock and Hill. And if there's something going on without complete transparency, then we're not going to have the respect of anybody in the community if we go forward. I think you need to pause, find out what is public, when it was made public, make sure that everybody has access to this information, that there's nothing that even gives us an impression of something happening behind closed doors. We have to seek complete transparency for the sake of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neill.
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you all, I'm going to close the public comments, and I'll bring it back to the city council for comment, questions, or if we still have some questions, sorry, if we still have some questions that have to be answered, you, certainly that opportunity is here for you all, or, and I guess, Mr. Toy, I would ask if that's what you're, you're offering.
So, yes, you're, you've asked, you could ask more questions, now it's the council comment period, but I think I should respond to some comments made, because I think for some of the things in the staff report, perhaps I'm the one to blame, relate to some of the attachments, and I'll tell you why. So I think first of all, in the staff report, it's clear, as David was trying to point out, your planning director was trying to clarify what was, the staff report did not include. So I guess in hindsight, yes, if we explained it the way he did about this situation, then it would have been more clear. However, I don't believe it was intentional on any part of, of staff to write something that people may deem to be misleading or dishonest, I, that wasn't the intent at all, it was just, obviously, it could have been better clarified. Now, one of the things related to attachments, the settlement agreement itself and the RFP, actually staff wanted to attach the settlement agreement, it was just in my experience, we never attach settlement agreements, so I said, well, just don't attach a settlement agreement, I don't remember what we said about the RFP, but I just said, we don't normally do, at least in my experience, so we didn't. Obviously, in hindsight, we would have if we thought that's what people wanted to see. And looking back at your February 1st item, it is on there on consent, perhaps the way it's worded isn't the way people would have thought. It should be worded, but it clearly is the settlement agreement that, that was approved. But I just thought it was important to indicate that I think what the planning director was indicating is, one of the reasons he came back with the RFP was just the issue of fairness, fairness of trying to work with the parties and then adjusting RFP to include the one thing, although it is true, it's clearly in the discretion of the city to decide what action should be taken. The consultant can make their recommendations, but ultimately, that goes to the council for approval, as well as the council has full discretion over this project once it comes back to the council for approval. So this is really, in my mind, the first step you would do with any project, you would get a consultant to do your CEQA analysis, that's the first step. After that, you have a bunch of other steps to go through the process, so I just wanted to point that out, it's just, this is the first step, this isn't anything approving any projects, it's just getting an environmental consultant on board, so whenever applications are submitted, you could begin the normal process. But I thought it was important just to point out for staff that there was no intentional tension on staff to do some things, and for the attachments, I apologize for that, I'll know better in the future.
Does this council have discretion over what, what type of environmental review we call for? Like, for example, there are many projects in town where the planning director, the planning staff will say, this is, you know, for example, the Sonoma Hotel project, you know, straight to EIR situation, is that a situation that we have discretion over?
Well, you'd have to ask, I don't, I'm obviously that familiar with the settlement agreement, but in my experience, that when you hire a consultant, consultant in this case will do their initial study, recommend what you should do. As the council, yes, you could decide when it comes back to you, if it's EIR, it's EIR, if it's a mitigated NEGDEC, you could say, no, we believe it takes an EIR because of X, Y, and Z. So that's, that's in your discretion, you get to decide, we're just providing you the analysis of what the consultant believes is the minimal level of environmental review you have to conduct.
Traditionally, Councilmember Barnett, the initial decision on what level of environmental assessment to engage in is, is actually selected by staff after consultation with the CEQA expert, that's, that's historically and almost universally the case. The planning commission and the council can always overturn that decision later on. So there's a bit of a risk factor involved for the developer to pursue a lower level of CEQA analysis, and that there's always that risk, but that's how it typically is done. So in this case, that's the practice of this city, it's the practice of every city I've represented in the last forty years. The planning director with assistance of the consultant will determine what is the appropriate level of environmental review, and-
It is, it is the risk to the developer, because obviously, an EIR is a higher standard.
Exactly, so if the-
But, but we, we're the ones that get sued, right?
You are, but you have the ultimate decision to overturn the planning director's decision. If the planning director's decision is a CAT X, or it's a negative deck, or a mitigated negative deck, that comes to the council, and the council can say, no, it has to be an EIR, and it goes back. And, and that's the risk of the developer for sure. So the council has ultimate say-so as to level of the CEQA analysis that is to be applied to a given project, including this one. But I want to be clear that initially, it may be a negative deck, it may be a mitigated negative deck, that may be what the planning director determines is appropriate in this case, based upon the analysis performed by the consultant.
Well, all that having been said, I'm not at all comfortable moving forward with a, a single response to the RFP by a person who was suggested by the applicant and who has had other conversations with that consultant, that just doesn't sit well with me. And I, I find it very difficult for us to move ahead with this contract for this, this consultant under, under those terms.
What I, what I would suggest is continuing this item in our next, when it comes back up, I would like in the packet to have the settlement agreement, the first RFP, the second RFP, any correspondence between the developer and the city, and a draft for a potential third RFP, because in a perfect world, I would like our planning director, or at least our council, to be able to pick a consultant, and we don't really have that choice, we have one in front of us. And I think the goal of the settlement agreement was also to have, to provide us a sort of palette of options that do not appear to exist, and I don't know why that is the case. And I don't know why that is the case. Perhaps maybe we need to send it to more consultants. Also, I have one more question for, for perhaps the city attorney. For the edification, I mean, this has sort of discussed, been discussed a few times, but has, has been discussed many times now. It was not part of the discussions of the settlement agreement. Why was the decision or what was the context around the decision to bypass the planning commission and bring it straight to the council? I mean, that's not typical. So why?
Well, I'm a little reluctant to talk about what went on in closed sessions as part of settlement discussion. So I'll, I'll be very sort of obtuse in my response.
Okay.
And be direct, and I'll be direct by saying that was a deal point insisted upon by Mr. Jasper.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
As to the deal with the developer, I attended several closed section meeting at the beginning of this year. Because I wasn't a new council member at that time, so most of the time during closed section, I just listened more to our colleagues, you, Logan Harvey, and Amy Harrington, and Rachel Hungley. So, because I feel like the very comfortable and confident for our group made a decision. Because two of our other council members, they are lawyers and then knowledgeable. So the average time when they deal with the Jasper's representative, Jeff always, you know, give us very detailed reports and make analysis. What is the positive side, what is the negative side? I couldn't fully understand it in detail, but it feels like, you know, right now, we should, right now, we already changing our contents of our city council. We should, you know, follow, respect the previous council member made a collective decision. That is a part of our democracy. So I want to support, we need to move forward for this project and go send to consulting company. One thing I want to emphasize is, this project is kind of not only planning commission, city councils, all our own communities. Today, I received many emails and even three phone calls regarding this project. Transparency, professional is very, very important, especially for our town, city of the Sonoma. Because all our residents here, they are very knowledgeable. They concern our community. So we should learn something from this case, just disclose it more as possible and give to the local residents, let them read and know what's going on in the future, improve our service, we improve our quality of community. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Felder? No? Well, I guess, it's interesting. I'm, you know, this has been such a, well, first of all, it's a difficult time for everyone. It's horrible, horrible. Everybody out there right now, anyone who called, you're all heroes for living through this. So I thank you all for being able to share a lot of your, your comments. I think just having the will to, you know, be part of government at this point is, is admirable. I am feeling that I have some questions. You know, this has been going on a long time. So I, I'm just concerned with, I guess, the, the process that we were part of that didn't seem to work in the way that there was an assumption. I don't think there's any blame. I'm not interested in that, but I think you may have heard from council members what, what they're concerned about. So at this point, I'd like to undersee what, what are our choices? And, and I'd like to turn to the city council and also our city attorney first. Thank you.
Well, one of the alternative actions in our staff report is request additional proposals and/or execute contracts with other environmental consulting firms. And so I sort of said earlier what I, I would like to see, and I'd like to make that motion to continue this item. So I move that we continue this item to a date certain, uncertain?
We would say we'd come back to you, if, if I could just ask a little clarification.
Of course.
Okay. So what you would like, if you continue to your next meeting is September, which is September 20th?
Yes.
Okay. September 20th. What you'd like, we would modify the staff report, obviously to provide much more clarity. We'd probably also include what happened in February if that, if that would help. You'd like a copy of the first RFP, the second RFP, the settlement agreement, and any correspondence that we have had with the applicant or the applicant had with...
Well, just some of the conversation we had earlier. I was just concerned about some of the, what I would call, you know, potential interference. And so I think I would just like to see that.
Okay. If it's, my understanding, a lot of it was verbal, but any written correspondence that we may have?
Yes. Yes. Or audio tapes.
Okay.
That was a joke.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Barnett, you're, you are satisfied with what Mr. Toy has offered?
Well, yes, and then...
Because I know you had a list.
Yeah, and then the first RFP, the second RFP, and then a potential third RFP. And the ultimate goal would be to get more than one response. And so I don't know how you do that. So if we get one out of eight, maybe we send it to sixteen? Again, you guys are the professionals. I would just like to be able to choose from multiple options.
Councilmember Barnett, you need to understand that...
Can I finish, please? Let me finish. Because, and maybe this is for you as well, Shock and Hill, as some of our, you know, commentators said, was the biggest, in my view, issue that the city of Sonoma had to deal with over the last five years. I mean, this room was packed with people at the planning commission, at the city council meeting. Someone even brought a tree. It is part of our general plan. It's, it sort of borders our overlook. We have a whole hillside ordinance because of Shock and Hill. And so I think it's really important for, you know, our community to treat this project with the transparency and respect it deserves. And up until this point, I, I have concerns. So.
I, I think I'd like to ask for the ability to, to solicit further proposals so that we have a choice of contracts. And I don't see how we can do that by September 20th.
Well, I guess, I was gonna say on September 20th, we could make the decision with more information and context. And then perhaps at that point, we make a decision to put out a third RFP. I can see our city attorney isn't thrilled with that. You were, I interrupted you. You were...
No, I interrupted you. I apologize for that. I, I think we need to be realistic here. And I'm concerned that we're moving into an area of unreality. All of the cities I represent currently are having very good, difficult time retaining environmental consultants. It's become a very complicated, competitive process. The state legislation requiring housing elements that go on and on and on also trigger the need for environmental consultant. And their, their contracts now are extending for years with a given city to develop a, a housing element and doing the environmental work for the housing element or general plan update. So it's very difficult to find environmental consulting firms to respond. Sending it out to nine or ten or twelve or thirteen more during a third phase or a third wave of RFPs will not guarantee that you will get three to pick from. The settlement agreement does not require three. All it requires is that we solicit from three. Just, just a cautionary word, that going through this exercise may produce zero. We had the first phase, as you know, produce an application, a proposal. That proposer was solicit the second time and it declined altogether.
Do we know why they declined the second time?
I, I don't know.
Do you know, Christina?
Yeah. A very, very common issue right now with every single consulting firm that we solicited is there, there's so much work out there that people are only doing sole source work. So that is potentially another option. But we had the, every single firm that responded to us saying that they were not going to propose. It takes an incredible amount of time and effort to put together an RFP. I used to work as an environmental consultant. I would do RFPs for EIRs. It is hundred, hundred, 150 hours of work. And so the more firms you give it to, the less of a chance they have to win the work. And so there's less incentive for them to bid on the proposal. And we also want to find somebody that the city trusts. That's, we have a pretty short list of consultants that the, the city has a good reputation working with.
Mr. Toy?
I was just gonna say, if you want a perspective from other cities and towns, it's the same problem. As the city attorney indicated, you know, we try to get a RFP for EIR and, you know, for $500,000 of the work. We got one firm. Other firms didn't bother to reply. We went out for consultant for EIR for a housing element. One firm. All the others were just too busy and it's, it's a major problem. And it's all a point in time. So while the first person may have submitted something on the high end because they figured, "Hey, what the heck? That's a possibility." And then when it comes down that it's going out again, they might just say, "We're too busy now," and withdraw it. And now you have somebody, just probably because of point in time, they have the availability. So it's, it's very difficult. And I would agree, you could send it out to a bunch of firms, but I'm not sure you're gonna get very many. And you may lose the one that you, that you have. So it's a tricky thing. But I understand, I would say to the council, "Let us come back to you in September with this information." Just as clarity, do you actually want us to repair a third RFP to go out? It would probably be the same as the second one.
Yeah, I suggest a third one also is...
Just so you can see it.
Yeah, third one.
Why, why would it?
More replies, more feedback.
Are you saying a third one that's a rip, that repeats the second one? Or are you saying a new third one?
Or why, why would it be the same as the second one?
No, I'm just asking.
Or, yeah.
Because that issue today is a different. If we put in a, you know, current date, send it, send it out, that would be more...
Okay. How, how about this suggestion? It sounds like staff has contacted the previous ones, indicated they went, they couldn't apply. Why don't when we come back, we will, I'm not saying that you should this, but we will contact firms to just confirm again why they wouldn't apply. We'll ask them a question. On the odd chance we're to reissue this, would you even consider it? So you have some feedback.
And we're not saying a price. They're offering a price, correct?
Yes, we set the scope of work.
Okay.
So that's why it's gonna vary. A lot of times, they'll build in a lot more cushion because they just don't know. So I, I think, again, one of the tricky things to this, and I understand it's an issue, is settlement agreements are tricky because it's a previous council in this case. And so you have no background in, in history related to that. And that's always hard for one council to abide by what a previous council agreed to. And so that's the tricky thing. And this happens to be, we'll call it a highly visible, highly controversial type of project. And that's what creates all the angst in, in my experience. And I, I understand that 100%. I get it moving forward. We'll come back to you in September with the information. We'll try to provide you as much information as possible. Maybe we'll reach out to some firms just to give you some more information to address your concerns. But again, I just have to point out, it, it's literally the first step. You're just retaining a firm. So whenever an application is submitted, you could actually have somebody do your environmental review. And more importantly, you would have somebody available for some type of fixed price. But that being said, you don't need to make any decisions until your next meeting September. We will come back to you with as much information as possible. I don't know if we'll put together a third RFP, but let me say this, if we think there's something significantly different, if we were to issue a third RFP, we'll just include that information in the staff report. So just so you know, this item...
I, I would like to see a third RFP.
Okay. So you like to actually see something?
Yeah. And I, and one question due to the situation with firms and work. Historically, going back a while, we used to do environmental review in-house. Is that something that's possible? I mean, it's possible. You used to do them, right, Christina? It's just not time or...
The, the answer is yes, Councilmember Barnett. One option available to the city is to not do an initial study and go straight to an EIR. That's a call that has been made as a result of the settlement and release agreement. If, for example, we were not, this provision was not there, I'd more than likely make that call based on the history of the project having a neg deck. That'd be an option to consider going straight to an EIR.
I think he was asking, can you do it in-house?
Can you do it in-house?
No, physically we cannot.
Can we do the work in-house?
Physically, we don't have the ability to do that.
Because of staffing issues or...
Staffing and other workload. Yes, that's correct.
Well, I don't know how anyone else feels, but I think we need to move on and make a decision. I think, you know, if we keep ruminating, we're gonna be here until midnight. So why don't we, what is the pleasure of this council?
Did you actually finish your motion?
It's a good question.
How about if you make the motion?
I don't know if I did, although I don't know if you want me to keep going. So I think I ask for, to continue the items in the next meeting, the settlement agreement in the packet, both RFPs in the packet, a potential third RFP, any correspondence between the developer and the city, and perhaps more context over talking to these firms. It's, you know, just, and perhaps Councilman Felder has something to add or...
How about correspondence between the developer and, and the consultant, which we think there was some? Don't know. We just know through talking with the AECOM that they had been contacted by the applicant.
Okay. All right. Well, that's my motion.
Okay.
I second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Felder?
Aye.
Vice Mardine?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. At this point, I think we're gonna take a five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you. At this point, I think we're gonna take a five-minute break. Thank you. Madeline Aggermonte.
Yeah, that is the five, yeah, five point one.
Five point one, right? So I'm, I'm starting the meeting again. We're in, uh, public hearings. Five point one, introduction of ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sonoma, amending chapter 13.10 Water Shortage and Conservation Plan of Title 13 Water and Sewage of the Sonoma Municipal Code for Consistency with the 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan and with enforcement provisions in other municipal code sections and finding that the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 1506.1B3, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I'm feeling good. My mask is fitting. Everything's good.
Mayor Aggermonte and members of the council. This evening, we're introducing this ordinance as directed by council on June 7th, when council adopted the new urban water management plan. As required, every five years, the city needs to update our urban water management plan. The state provides detailed guidance on what needs to be included in the urban water management plan update. Included in the urban water management plan is the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. The requirements for this update have six water shortage stages. Our prior Water Shortage Contingency Plan had four water shortage stages. Those are in the Sonoma Municipal Code. So at the time we adopted the urban water management plan, it was acknowledged that we need to follow up and update the code to be consistent with the new Water Shortage Contingency Plan that has been adopted. In addition to modifying the code for consistency with the new Water Shortage Contingency Plan, we have new enforcement provisions in the code since the last code update for this section that makes sense to apply for, to enforcement for water shortage situations. So those are the proposed code changes for introduction at tonight's meeting. If the council introduces the ordinance, holds a public hearing at this meeting, the ordinance could be adopted at the September 20th meeting and be in effect 30 days thereafter. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I want to remind you, this is a public hearing.
Just a quick one. We're in stage two right now. Is that under the new six stages?
No, it's under the existing.
And how much difference is the stage two under the old versus the new?
That's an excellent question. I am actually hoping that if we do introduce the ordinance and then adopt it and then it takes effect 30 days later, that we will have rain and hopefully eventually get out of this severe drought that we're in. I'd have to look at the details. You can see the red marks in the.
Okay, I'll look at that.
Provisions and see the changes from existing stage two to proposed stage two.
Anyone else have any questions or no? All right. Thank you. I think I'll take this out to the public now. Is there anyone from the public who would like, like to ask any questions or have comments? Seeing none here, are there any on Zoom? Thank you. Fred Alabach.
Yes, I'm back again. For the state's six water storage mandatory demand reduction, it says new construction must offset new demand by conserving one times the new demand within the community. I didn't find that I was able to understand that. It doesn't seem quite clear. Does this apply as long as there's, only as long as there's stage six? And then after stage six, the offset requirement goes away? Does it mean the community must help offset new water use or the developer has to? Is there an example of what an offset might be? It occurred to me that this could be bypassed by, um, somebody by drilling a well and using groundwater. And Sigma and the Sonoma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency currently don't have any offset provisions. At a stage six, the county might restrict well permits. I don't know if the city issues well permits or that's county. There's nothing in the stage six that I read about pausing city well permits. Occurs to me that a possible stage six, more sensible remedy would be if we get to that stage, mandate that all water users use less each to accommodate the new construction and new housing, especially if this is deed restricted to portable house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alabach. Do we have anyone else?
That's all, Madam Mayor.
That's it. Thank you so much. I'm closing public comments, bringing you back to the city council. And what is the pleasure of the council? Oh, I think there was a question. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think, uh, our Department of Public Works Director, the offset, I think Fred was asking that question?
Right. So enter stage six, critical shortage, which is a greater than 50% mandatory reduction. And there's item, it's item three in the list. New construction must offset new demand by conserving one times the new demand within the community. And so an example of this could be, say, it is an affordable housing project, right? So this was Fred's example that has calculated how much new demand would be created by this housing project. So that development would have the opportunity to find a partner or partners in the community where there's an opportunity to conserve water. An example might be to extend the recycle water line that now irrigates the fields at Sonoma Valley High School to maybe another area that uses water and could shift that water use, you know, potable water demand onto recycled water in the same demand that this new housing would impose on the city's water system and could offset the demand that way. That's just an example.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Yeah, that is. Somebody told me they already continuously, you know, save the water year by year. Automatic, the voluntary already saved the 20% and the 30%. But right now, we have another ordinance and then save another 20%. How we can handle it because some feels like, and our policy in the penalize those people who are voluntary saving the water already.
Yeah, that's a great question. And I know a lot of people that are careful about water all the time when they hear that, oh, we need to reduce 20% more. Like, how am I gonna do that? I'm already reducing so much. The 20% isn't applied on an individual basis. It's all of us collectively as the city's water customers, saving 20%. So if someone's already doing their part, they don't need to do more. We have other folks who, you know, they're brought to our attention that some people are still watering their lawns and the water's running down the gutter. There's other people that do have the ability to save more and those are the customers that we're looking for more savings from.
Mr., uh, Councilmember Barnett? Mr. Felder, nothing? You so much. So at this point, I'm close, no, we've done that one. So I would ask, what is the, the pleasure of the city council? This is. Where am I? Okay, what is it? We're looking for an amendment, is that right?
The recommendation of staff is to introduce an ordinance as described in the staff report.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to thank Colleen for all her hard work. And this is obviously a requirement of our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. And so I would like to make a motion and introduce an ordinance of the city council, amending chapter 13.10 Water Shortage and Conservation Plan.
I'll second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Felder?
Aye.
Vice Mardine?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Just like to make a comment to our Public Works Director. I think city manager, myself, David Storer. I'm, I hope I'm not forgetting anyone. Oh, Bob Felder, we visited the, I think it's Altima Drone. And they are very excited about the water-saving kits. So hopefully if we have some left, we can bring that down to that complex. I'll talk to, of course, staff and, or, you know, just let you know. I don't know how many they might need, but they were very excited about, they have a beautiful garden that they, you know, that they grow vegetables by themselves there. So I think it would be a great idea, you know, for us to do that. So hopefully if there's any leftover kits, it would be great if I could, we'll find out what they need with a discussion with them and then maybe we can provide them with some. They were pretty excited about it.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Calendar. Six point one, consideration, discussion and direction to staff regarding possible adoption of draft new revised application procedures and guidelines to allow a second retail storefront commercial business to operate in the city. City Manager and Planning and Community Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a very brief PowerPoint. I'll follow it. It was, it was included in your packet? Next. So before you, this evening, I'll just talk very briefly about, uh, the outline for tonight is council-directed in the past for two things to return to it tonight. We brought the first of those components. Before you this evening is a revised flow chart to outline a cannabis process for a second dispensary in the town. You may, you will not recall, some of you, because you weren't here on the council in 2019, that the city council adopted two things. It was resolutions to allow for applications and create procedures and then also to have administrative guidelines. So it's two things. So tonight, we're before you with the application process where we've abbreviated it and provide some time savings. So as you can see, tonight, we're gonna show you that revised flow chart. We'll talk to you about, in general, some contact that we've had with consultants to provide services to staff. We'll talk to you about the status of use permits in the Sonoma Valley that are out there. And then leave time for questions at the end. Next. So for, for the council's benefit tonight, again, there are three of you that are new to the cannabis process per se. But we took that first process and changed a few of the phases and steps around such that the, the process, if you will, the application process for an RFP is, is different. The major change that we have is for a proposer to submit an application that actually includes the situs for where the proposed second dispensary will go. In the first process that we had from over a year ago, that process or step was a, it was a step within a subsequent phase called Phase Two. But we've changed that around to allow for that to be submitted. We're still gonna have a, an RFP process. And you'll see that we'll be having staff help us to go through the review criteria and having the city manager forward a list of five finalists for your city council to consider awarding what is called a conditional certificate. Depending on the number of proposers that submit during that RFP process. By the way, all of the application materials and requirements are still the same. They still have to provide community benefits. They still have to provide a security plan, a lighting plan. Nothing was stripped to, in order to save time. It was. It was more or less the timing of when certain things are submitted to the city for, for its review. So in essence, uh, the timeline before you this evening is not stated date specifically, but, or, or even in weeks to a point, uh, because it does ultimately depend upon the number of proposer that comes our way. The first process, we did have 10, and all of them were reviewed by staff, and I believe a, two of them actually fell out at different points of the review process. The City Manager was able to submit five finalists to the council for consideration at that point. Um, there were interviews of the City Council, uh, in public forum, and at one point, uh, in the process there, which would now be the end step, if you will, where you see the blue highlight of conditional certificate, that was where Spark was awarded that conditional certificate, and then went down to the part where you see the land use and the use permit process that the Planning Commission ultimately then reviewed the merit of the application as to the location that was provided in a secondary process, um, which is in your first phase. So the ultimate end game here would be to, at one point, once the conditional certificate is awarded, uh, it doesn't grant any privileges at that point, other than to proceed to the land use component. An applicant or proposer at that point would go through the land use process, ostensibly an appeals process, and then ultimately, uh, get approval, and then go through a process where they could get building permits and receive occupancy, and then proceed to what's called a commercial cannabis business permit, once all of the, uh, conditions of the use permit are granted and the building permit has been perfected to a point where they're seeking occupancy. And, uh, we can now go, uh, and all by way of saying, once the council determines, should it determine this process is an acceptable path, we could then perfect it perhaps unless there's additional things you want to see or not see as compared to the prior process. But the direction we did receive earlier in the year, uh, I believe in April, was that we would look at a process that would be, uh, somewhat, uh, quicker, if you will, uh, in order to facilitate the, uh, the ability of an RFP to go out. Uh, and as I said, the RFP originally was sent out for, uh, a period of time from January the 3rd to February 21st of 2020, and it took until the fall of that year to actually award the conditional certificate. Next. So, um, we have had contact with consultants, um, we've talked to about six of them, I think it is. The, there are those, we've broken them out into two categories, those that have worked exclusively and only for public agencies, and those that have actually had clients in both the public and the private sector. Um, we've provided to you the names of three. Avenue Insights, HDL Companies, and SPI Consulting that provided us with an interest of assisting staff as it goes through the review of those app, applications or proposals, once we're out there, once we've received them after the RFP process is closed. Um, my recommendation and staff's recommendation would be to select, at some point, uh, those that have worked exclusively for public agencies as opposed to those that have had clients on both sides of the equation, so to speak. Uh, next. With respect to, uh, what's out there, uh, within the Sonoma Valley, uh, there are actually four, uh, potential cannabis locations for dispensary. When I say potential, I'll use that term, uh, lightly, only because three are not within our, uh, purview. The one is, and that is this, the Spark. You can see the Spark application there, and you can see that, I'm forgetting the number that I've put in there, but there's, to the top of the, the, the map, if you will, you'll see one in Kenwood, one at, um, uh, Madrone and Arnold. You'll see one obviously in the city limits, and then you'll see one down at Big Bend at the very bottom of the, of the map before you. Next. So I prepared an Excel spreadsheet just showing you the, the potential locations in Sonoma Valley. Uh, again, I've just outlined the accessories parcel number, and that these three are being processed and are at various stages in the county use permit review process, if you will. The, the one that I want to point out is the one at Arnold and Madrone, that being, uh, an application that was approved at the boarding zone of adjustments or, uh, yeah, boarding zone of adjustment at the county level, and it was appealed to the Board of Supervisors. Highlighted in red there, you'll see that it goes before the board on September the 14th, so basically a week from today, where ostensibly they could actually approve a use permit for that, that particular location. I think I've provided with you, for you, the distance from our city limits. So this is outside of the city of Sonoma, not from, measured from City Hall or elsewhere, but from the direct city limit line, uh, closest to those applications. And I also provided for you, uh, the square footages. And all of these projects, interestingly enough for me anyway, is that they're all in existing buildings. It's not a brand-new build. They're converting or do, doing TIs, uh, related to existing buildings. And so the, the next one, uh, in the Kenwood area, I'll just mention that one, is at a point where, uh, it's kind of like in a stall, if you will. Uh, there's not active movement on it, whereas the one down at Big Bend, they are completing studies and working in an effort, uh, to diligently pursue that use permit, according to county staff. That includes, uh, concludes my presentation, other than to say that in speaking with representatives on Spark on the timing of their project, they've begun demolition inside their project. They're currently going through plan check review here at City Hall, at the city, and hope to be beginning, um, operations, I believe, in first quarter. I defer to, uh, to Spark. Mr. Pearson is here tonight, you can ask him more specifics. I'm sure he'd love to, to assist in that regard. And this conclude, next, this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And at this point, I think I'd like to call for any questions from the City Council.
I have a question. Uh, thank you, David. That was a great presentation. I appreciate all the hard work from the planning department. Um, I also appreciate you trying to streamline the process. Um, one concern I have is, um, when we talked about potentially allowing a second retail storefront, one of the things that at least was important to me was to provide sort of an opportunity for sort of Sonoma Valley-based, smaller operations, Sonoma Valley-based entrepreneurs. And I worry having to select a site first, um, might be out of the, um, you know, smaller entrepreneurs, Sonoma Valley-based, smaller cannabis operations might not have the capacity to secure a site, or, you know, and I'm just thinking out loud here, how that would sort of affect the market dynamic. For example, I think the location is a very important part of the dispensary, and if we knew the location right off the bat, which I think ultimately they did in the first process, or at least in the final two, but if you know it right off the bat, that might cause a planning commissioner, city councilor, staff to, um, not evaluate the applicant and their business model as much as, oh, well, that's a good location for it. And so, do you understand what I'm saying? Like?
I, I'm not sure I understood it in the form of a question, but I can respond. The first
Yeah.
RFP that we created was really a matter of, who do we think should be doing business here in Sonoma? You know, culling it to that point, and then getting down to, I believe, four, and then ultimately two, and then it was a matter of, okay, go your way and now find locations, and then make a presentation on the locations.
Mm-huh.
And that's, that's how we proceeded at that point. So clearly, uh, in talking with the City Manager, he has experience doing it either way, I believe, and I'll defer to, uh, the City Manager to address that, because that was really one of the things. Uh, there was a 45-day period built into that first process, once those applicants or, excuse me, proposers that the council was interested in, to go tell them, from that list of 10, to cull it down to a smaller number, for them to then go seek a site. Whereas one could argue today that if we did put the site as part of the submittal, that may give an advantage over those that had already secured a site the first time around, at the disadvantage of maybe some of the smaller ones that you've talked about.
Yeah, I just don't know how a smaller operation would be able to secure a site based on, you know, a uncertain path forward.
Maybe as clarity, um, they don't have to necessarily secure at least, they could just have a non-binding letter of intent. I think the thought pattern of going and selecting a site is you only have certain locations they could locate. So theoretically, if they meet all the buffer requirements, then, you know, that site should theoretically be acceptable, but you are right, sites do come into play, um, when you decide, and we just thought, might as well just cut to the chase and know where they're thinking, because most likely, they already have a site in mind if they're gonna go through the whole application process.
I understand. I guess something, and we can speak about this further, but in a weird way, I'd almost prefer to award, if we were gonna go down this road, um, you know, a second dispense, I would almost prefer to award, what is it, the conditional certificate, to an operation without a site at all. And then, 'cause that gives them sort of bargaining power with, you know, you know, if there are like three or four potential sites that they can tenant, and they have the one, at this point, the second conditional certificate, that gives them bargaining power, you know? Whereas, am I making any sense here? I know it's getting late, but...
We, I, you know, we've got somebody that went through the process, and the
Yeah.
audience could speak to that, but, and I can't speak for the market, but it would seem to me that if you're out there with the only conditional certificate, then the potential landowner has got a bit of a, an advantage at that point, it would seem.
But, but at that point, you can choose from multiple options. And so the, the, the certificate bearer has, in my view, the advantage. It, well, okay, we'll talk about that later.
When we talk about the second dispensary store, can you give me a little bit update for the first one? Yes, scheduled, uh, what is the current construction, if any, in a timeframe, when they went open, or any additional, another service, or any additional?
Uh, Councilmember Ding, uh, Vice Mayor Ding, excuse me, is that the first one in Sonoma?
Yes, Spark.
Yes. I'd refer to, to Mr. Pearson here, he can tell you a little bit more in detail, but I think the goal in talking with Andrew from his firm is that they're hoping to shoot for first quarter of 2022.
First quarter.
And when you open it up to public, Eric could, uh, perhaps address that.
All right.
At this point, I will open it up to the public. If anyone from the public here this evening would like to speak.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you. My name's Eric Pearson. Uh, I'm the founder and CEO of Spark, and as you are all aware, Spark was awarded a permit, uh, to operate a dispensary here in Sonoma. And, um, we are, uh, under construction now. So we have a demolition permit that's been issued, and we're told that the, um, building permit should be issued mid-September, which is about a, a week from now. And, uh, we have a contract signed with our contractor. A demolition's been done, so we've refined the contract based upon structural upgrades and whatnot to a historical building, and, uh, we expect to be done in, uh, four months, which puts us about January, February, uh, first quarter. Um, I'm here tonight, uh, one, to answer any questions, and two, also, um, offer you some perspective from an operator, operator's point of view. As you noticed, um, uh, we had a list of four other dispensaries opening up, um, in the valley, uh, one in Kenwood, uh, one on Madrone and Arnold, and one, um, at a new term I heard, which is the Big Bend, uh, at 121 and 116. And those are all dispensaries that are, uh, located in the county. Um, the county does not require, um, the social services, uh, and the give-back that we've did, and we contractually are obligated to, um, through the RFP process. Um, and so those dispensaries will have competitive advantages against us, um, for one thing. Also, I'm not sure what the, the tax differential is, um, between Sonoma County and Sonoma, um, but, uh, there are 12 businesses that deliver cannabis, uh, into the city limits right now, listed on a funny name, but, uh, a website that's very popular to find cannabis called Weed Maps. And, uh, on there, you can find that there's a, 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 a large assortment of cannabis coming in, into the city. So we're asking, um, that this process not begin for another year, um, at least, so we can have our doors up and running, we can have a year worth of data and information, uh, profitability, so on and so forth, um, to see how viable the business is, and to see whether or not, uh, the city can sustain another business. Um, I think there's a general perception that these businesses make an enormous amount of money. Um, they don't. You know, we, uh, I just shut down two in San Francisco, um, that have been operating, were operating since 2012, that just simply couldn't pay the bills. The regulatory costs are extremely high, the state permits, uh, the lawyers, the fees, the appeals, the remodel, um, that we're going through is over a $1.2 million remodel, um, just, uh, to get into the building. So, um, and you know, on those construction costs, it's, um, as, as some of you know, who, who were here for the process, you, you don't have a lot of options when you have a competitive process like this, when you're picking a building, and so you're stuck with what you get. And so we found a, a building, and a great landlord has been very cooperative, but we have $1.2 million in, in expenses that we have to undergo just to get the doors open. So anyway, I ask for your consideration there to, um, I don't think this is a bad idea to allow another dispensary in, and I think a social equity, a locally owned, a woman-operated business, um, someone that would, can, uh, come from, so that's been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, is a great idea. I just ask that our business give it an opportunity, uh, to get off the ground and, and the city to have the data necessary to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak here this evening? Uh, City Clerk, do we have anyone?
We do. We have Josette Rose Iker.
Hi, can you hear me? Um, can you hear me?
Yes, Josette.
Okay, thank you. It's Josette Rose Iker, um, 1110 Loma Court. Um, I'd like to thank Councilmember Barnett for, um, his, his input tonight. Um, I am, of course, very happy that, um, you're moving forward with a second dispensary, and it's on today's agenda. I am also happy that the City Council wants to speed up the selection process. My only worry, um, in having applicants have a site selected to be considered, is that there are really not too many sites that meet the restrictions in the ordinance. Another thing to think about is it would give those who already have an established agreement with the building owner an advantage over other applicants, who may be discouraging some really good applicants, just something to think about. Um, I see that community benefit is part of the selection criteria, but I hope this goes beyond pledging to give the city money or just be a good employer. It would be nice to think about the benefits to the client community, especially those who use cannabis for medical reasons. A dispensary that will listen to what the client base needs and wants and be open to carrying products the clients ask for is very important. One thing to think about is if the applicant is also a manufacturer or a grower, and ask them to pledge to carry products that clients want in addition to their own products. Um, and I want to make a couple of comments that I, I didn't prepare. Um, I want to talk about delivery services. Because I'm a medical user, the deliveries, uh, services are much more expensive and have minimums, and that make, and also, it makes it more difficult. And about the two locations outside the city limits, the one on Madrone and Arnold, um, it is not a slam dunk. There are very many community members against this location, and I think they will be present and, and heard at the appeals process on the 14th. And also, the Fremont location, um, the applicant there, the person planning that has a very poor track record, and in reality, will probably never open that location. Um, thank you, uh, once again for listening. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Iker?
David Iker?
Hi, yes, I'm David Iker. Um, just to follow up on what Josette just mentioned, I wonder if you could put the, up on the screen, the list of the four dispensaries, the, um, that, uh, potential ones that are coming out, because there was something very important that was listed on there that, um, Planning Director Store did not verbally mention. So I wonder if you could get that back up?
David, we can't show it where you can see the screen and you can talk at the same time. My apologies.
Okay, but the City Council members can see it?
Not if, while you're talking.
Yeah. Uh,
Okay.
Just talk, we have the location in our mind.
All right. Well, in any case, maybe after I'm talking, you can take a look at that, and the one that's on, um, uh, in Glen Ellen at Arnold and, um, um, Madrone, you'll see that it says that the staff recommends denial of the appeal. So, uh, it is very unlikely that that one will go forward. Thank you. So it is very unlikely that that one will go forward. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Iker. Are there any others?
We have Tom Conlin.
Thank you.
Hi, I just think it's groovy, baby. And I also wanted to thank the staff tonight for getting the Zoom working. I know I was hard on you guys last meeting about it. And it's been seamless tonight from my perspective here at home. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin, Tom, for recognizing that. I know they've gone through a lot to be able to get this seamless this evening. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Are there any other comments?
No. Is there written? There is one written comment, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, it's for general comments that just came in late, so there's no, with a further comment on this.
All right. So at this point, I'm going to close the public comments. And I don't know if staff has heard anything. I know, Mr. Toy, you have a lot of experience on these issues with respect to the dispensaries. I don't know if you have anything to add or anyone else. But I think.
I guess the only thing in talking to the planning director, if by chance you didn't want to have site selection upfront, then we would say we would just take it out. You would approve based on qualifications. And then really, the item has to go to the Planning Commission anyway for use permits, so that land use issue would be decided by the Planning Commission.
And also, Madam Mayor, if I can, just clarify the comment that you heard, at the county, anyway. So it was approved by the County Board of Zoning Adjustments. Members of the public appealed that approval. And the staff report, as we speak now, is staff is saying to deny the appeal, such that the project would be approved at Madrone and Arnold.
Oh. All right.
How about that at Camus, that in the courtyard, that one?
That one has a way to go, more so than the one at Big Bend, in that there, there's not a game of ping pong being played at the moment. Whereas at South Bend, Big Bend is south, I'll get it wrong. The one on the south side of town is, is currently active in providing information and data to the county, such that it can go through a public hearing process. So that is an active application.
I have a feeling, yeah, just intuition, you know, the, because right now, we talk about the second one. Because I haven't seen the first one yet. So the, you know, I don't know, is it the right or not right? So the, of course, that is important for our local residents, especially for those in the patients. And I cause, I cause couple, we've been already mentioned. And I would like to see our city policy and ordinance and application for, when you send it to our residents, our applicants, it will become a little bit matured with some the, and the historic code, the data based on, I, I, I know that is impossible. The reason why I want to say this, because during the past two or three years, our city council and the staff spent huge, huge energy and the time on that. So the, why? Because we want to work out very reasonable, precise, and walkable guideline for the applicants. So the, you know, that is the my, I, you know, think, maybe it doesn't make any sense, you know, but I have this kind of the feeling.
Mr. Felder, do you have any comments?
Just a couple of comments. I guess it's my understanding that if we would move forward on this, all we're doing is putting in a, a, a procedure and guideline, and it has nothing to do with an actual selection. So we can, if the procedure's in place and people apply, we have the option to either accept one or none of, of the people that apply. Is that correct?
What we're asking you to do tonight is provide direction to us about the process that we've presented, which is shortened from the prior process from 2019. And if there's changes in that process, we can make those at your direction. And then return at a later time, once those have been prepared, with the administrative guidelines that accompany the application process that you're talking about tonight. Along with resolutions that relate to the fees and also to background checks, again, that we did in December of 2019. So yes, once we get that all in place, then your council can determine when to direct staff to release the RFP. But that will come after we present you with both a process that you can agree upon and direct, and then also the adoption of the resolutions that I've just mentioned.
Thank you. And I also, I, I would agree with Councilperson Barnett that I would just soon see the site selection removed from that initial portion.
Can you remind me what the thrust of the, the reasoning was to streamline the process, just beyond the fact that it was taking too long for some? I mean, I mean, I, I felt like the process, the first process was ve- very exhaustive, but that was for a reason. And so I guess, what did we learn from that process? Is that sort of why we went to streamline the process?
Well, we would need to refer Councilmember Barnett to the discussion, I believe it was in April of this year, where the council received considerable public comment about the length that it took from the, from the close of the RFP process in February to the time that it took to get to the awarding of the conditional certificate, and then the process after that to go through a use permit review process. So I think there was a desire on the council's part, and that of the community, or some members of the community, that that just took way too long, was not acceptable, and we were directed to, to look at a, a new process, perhaps. And what we've done tonight is provided you with an option, with the major component being that of flipping the, the site selection.
Can you think of any other ways to streamline the process without the site, the site selection?
Not really. I mean, you would have to go sit back and think about it. I think the, the benefit of the time savings was to help reduce costs and help to get that second one in, in place.
Thank you. Is there any, do, you have a question, Jack?
Yes. Right now, how about administrative regulation is not a, right now, we are talking about application procedure, right? It's not administrative regulation. Have we already have?
So we currently have resolutions dated from December of 2019 that talk about the process as it relates to the municipal code. And it talks about allowing one retail and one non-retail. Now we would be going out for just one new retail, because the council did direct a change to the municipal code.
I may remind you that the municipal code allows for four commercial cannabis businesses in the city. One retail storefront, which is a dispensary, one non-retail, a testing lab, and then a manufacturing. And those, December of 2019, just talked about the first two. And the discussion at the council was, let's not open up the RFP process for all four of those types of commercial cannabis, uh, businesses. Let's talk about these two. We did not have anybody that was interested in the non-storefront. The focus on all of the 10 applications was, we just want to go with the dispensary with delivery services. And that we would then at some point in the future, move forward with maybe going out there for a testing lab or a non, excuse me, a manufacturing. The direction of the council in, in amending the code was to allow a second retail, but still not go for the non-storefront or either the testing lab or the manufacturing. So we, we provided for those zoning code change to allow for the second. Now you, you would be creating an application procedure and corresponding admin guidelines to accompany the application.
All right. Yeah, basically, we're using that for projects. All the compliant to within our two ordinance, which in the past, oh, uh, middle of the June 2015, and also another one is March 2019. Right. We have the two ordinance already got approved from the city council. That is right?
Yes.
Just to be clear, there's, we have section or Title V of the municipal code. And then we adopted, I think that was ordinance 03, 2019. And then 04, related to the buffers in the Title 19 of the zoning code. So we actually have it in two places, how commercial cannabis regulate, uh, businesses are regulated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I, I have no, I have no questions. I know more about this issue than, I almost care to. I'm glad to see Eric here this evening. You know, you survived that arduous, you know, vetting, so I, I congratulate you. So at this point, I'd like to know, what is the pleasure of the city council on 5.1? 6.1, sorry.
If I remember back during the discussion in April, a lot of the, I guess, I was thinking about it since I asked the question, the primary thrust for trying to streamline the process was competition. That, you know, there was a view out there that it would be better for the consumer to have multiple dispensaries to provide different, different products and perhaps better prices for the consumer. And, and so what I would recommend at this point, and I would be interested to see what the rest of the council thinks, I would want to, you know, I, I do have concerns about the site location right off the bat. I think that is going to preclude a small entrepreneur, a Sonoma Valley-based entrepreneur, which is sort of what I wanted that second dispensary to be. I think that might sort of put it out of reach for them. And so I would like to really focus on modifying our process to enable a dispensary like that, if that exists. Perhaps it doesn't. But, and so I think site selection would be an issue for them. I think we should look at other issues that would really promote, again, that sort of small Sonoma Valley-based entrepreneur, number one. And number two, I would, you know, so as we do that process, I think we'll have a little more information. So if this comes back at our next meeting, or perhaps the first meeting in October, I think we'll have more information by then to see what happens up at Arnold and Madrone. And perhaps we'll have more information about some of these other dispensaries, and perhaps we'll give more time. I was actually surprised we didn't have as much public comment tonight as we did. So we'll have more time for more, you know, public comment on this issue from various components. Then we'll be probably in a better position to make a decision on the best process. And then we'll have more context in terms of the competitive climate. Those are my general thoughts.
Anyone else?
Well, I agree, but I don't know where that leads. Do we, are you suggesting that we move ahead with getting some kind of a draft out there for us? With that exception of the site selection?
No, I was suggesting that we continue the item to the next meeting or then, you know, whenever, however long it takes. Hopefully not too long, obviously we're trying to streamline this. And just look at the process in a way that streamlines the process, but also really promotes a local Sonoma Valley entrepreneur. I don't know exactly how to do that. And I just, I do worry that site selection right off the bat would preclude that. And then perhaps in the next meeting or the meeting after, we'll have more information about that. We'll be able to make a better decision on the process, and we'll have more information on the competitive environment. And so perhaps at that point, if another dispensary is approved, or another one, perhaps there won't be a, you know, perhaps members of the public won't, you know, the competitive, what they wanted in terms of competition may already exist. And maybe this will be a futile effort. And so that's what I'm thinking.
Would agree.
Yeah, basically, I agree, yeah. Because, you know, we can, we don't need to worry about anything because we do have very solid legal, you know, the, and the foundation. We have the two ordinance already approved by our city council. We just mentioned about 104. But it's time for us to listen to more, because today, it's kind of strange, you know, not a lot of the people come out. We want to listen to more. And another thing is, we help out on the local and the business owners. But this business, really, really tough business. And the, to be honest, out in the local, the small business owners, basically, they are not a qualified player in this business. I already have seen so many, so many, you know, small business owners, they started even before Proposition 64, they struggling on turn right now. So the, we want to help in the local, in business people. And then give, give them that more time to, you know, the thinking. And then, again, we have the cornerstone here, we have the two ordinance here. Sonoma is open for these kind of new business. We just want to help small business owner and how to get into this business and in a long-term perspective. Thank you.
You know, and I don't support this, but, I'm sorry, Mr. Toy, do you have any comments?
Oh, I was just going to mention, if there's a majority of the council that's providing that direction, then yes, we would be able to come back to you probably in your second meeting in November. That'll allow the county's process to be completed. And then what we would come back to you with, we would come back to you with the process based on no-site selection. That would be taken care by the Planning Commission. And we would come back to you with something that addresses the concern, providing, we'll call it priority or points or something related to local-based Sonoma Valley businesses. So I think it'll probably take us some time to figure out what that would look like. So probably your second meeting in November, we'll come back to you with something.
Thank you. I knew you would make a suggestion, Mr. Toy.
Well, that was based on consultation with your city attorney and your planning director.
So at this point, I'm asking for, I'm asking for direction from the city council.
Yeah, I think we have your direction. If, if it sounds like all four of you are fine with what I said, then.
I, my vote, I am no. I'm not in support of this at all.
So, but majority.
I mean, traditionally not been in support of this. In fact, on April 19, 2021, I said no on adopting the municipal amendment to the municipal code to allow the second dispensary. So I have to say, stay true to my, you know, the, how I have voted in this, regarding this issue. I was put in a position to, to break the tie, even though I didn't support dispensaries. But I thought so much work has gone into this, from staff, from the business people, and that's why I did that. But this, I am, I'm not, still not in favor of the second dispensary. But thank you. I appreciate you taking direction.
I don't think we need a motion. I think we have direction, how to proceed. And really, you, you don't have to make any decisions till probably your second meeting in November, just related to the process. And at that time, if it's set to go, then we would need direction on when to issue an RFP. But you have till, now you can wait until your second meeting in November.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that, that approach is, is fine with me. But I, I do have some reluctance to go ahead and start the process for another dispensary if, if there's sufficient competition in the local area. So I would certainly like to revisit it before I would declare one way or another.
All right. Did, did, and do you understand that, Mr. Toy?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Just to clarify, you actually wouldn't make any decisions until your second meeting in November. That'd be the earliest, related to the process. And at that time, if we were ready, then you could provide guidance on actually an issuance date of RFP, because you don't actually need to issue it, if, if you approve everything.
Thank you so much. So you understand where the council is, what their decision is? All right, I'm going now on to 6.2. Alright, I'm going now on to 6.2, discussion consideration and possible action regarding designation of the City of Sonoma voting delegate and the city's position on the proposed resolutions for the 2021 League of California Cities Annual Conference and our city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Like most cities in the state, the City of Sonoma is a member of the League of California Cities, and it was founded in 1898, and what their role is, is they bring all of the cities together and, so that they can affect policy decisions, if the state legislates predominantly. The league provides legislative advocacy from, also on ballot measures, legal advocacy, education, and they really advocate to defend and expand the local control in the legislature. Each year, the League of California Cities holds an annual conference and, in which delegates from members across the state come together to network and to enhance their knowledge, skills, and combined resources. This year, the annual conference is being held in Sacramento on September 22nd and 20, through the 24th. An important part of that conference is the business meeting, the annual business meeting, which is typically held on the last day of the conference, and they, each of the delegates from the different cities consider resolutions that have been brought forward either by member cities, or in, there's a process they have to go through in order to put a resolution before the delegates. In order for the City of Sonoma to cast a vote at that meeting, we do have to designate, or the council does have to designate, a voting delegate. It can be typically, it's in the past, it's been both the mayor and council members, and we can designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates. At this time, the individuals that are signed up to go to the conference are Councilwoman Barnett and Vice Mayor Ding. So the staff would ask that you make, take an action to designate a voting delegate, which then I will forward to the league, which will enable them to get their vote card when they get there. After that, you may wish to discuss the two proposed resolutions that are going to be considered, and, and typically, the council will give direction to the delegate on how they would like them to vote on behalf of the city. The two resolutions that were put forward this year, the first one calls on the league to request the legislature to pass legislation in regards to the equal distribution of the Bradley Burns 1% local sales tax for in-state online purchases. There was an in-depth information in your packet on that resolution. And then the second one is that they asked the governor to provide, provide adequate regulatory authority and necessary funding to assist cities with railroad right-of-way areas to address illegal dumping graffiti and homeless encampments. So you can choose to provide direction, or you can, you know, you can handle it however you wish to. So at this time, that's the staff's report, and I will turn it back to you and answer any questions.
Thank you. So at this point, I would imagine, Mr. Vice Mayor Ding, if you would accept that position of being a voting, and I leave it up to your knowledge of, of the issues that arise unless you want some more information on those, of those pieces of legislation.
Yeah, if I, if I have any, you know, questions or very controversial, or, and I don't have the knowledge, I want to contact with you and with the, and the city manager and Rebecca.
Well, I think we, you will have information.
There's information that was presented to you, and the full resolution packet was in the agenda packet this evening, the details.
And I'm not attending.
And I would, I would, you do need to make a motion, and I would just suggest that there's only two, if you're both planning on being there, that you possibly vote, have one, if you said, say Vice Mayor Ding, and then the alternate. That way, if there is a problem, either one could take the action.
That's great, thank you. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion that.
Probably.
Oh, thank you. So sorry, I'm going out to public comment on this. Seeing no, seeing no one rise, any zoomers? Oh my God, I can't believe I just said that.
I do have a question about the, do we have the right to pass a motion or a resolution to encourage our vice mayor to vote a certain way? Or is it up to, like, like if we support, like, for example, I support resolution one and resolution two, you know, I read, you know, is that, do we send, do we tell him how to vote, or?
Typically, it's, typically, it's been done different ti, different ways. I mean, in the past, it's been different, done different ways, Councilwoman Barnett. And when I've seen in my past cities and a lot of the times here, the council want to discuss the resolutions and kind of say, you know, some people are like, I, I really don't have an opinion. But then if someone does have a strong opinion, if they want to support something, then, you know, then it would, yes, it would be very appropriate for you to say, you don't need to pass a resolution, but for you to say, you know, I would like for this to be supported.
Okay.
Alright, yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I support resolution one and two, so you can consider that as you.
Yeah, I second, yeah.
I also support both resolutions.
And then we just need a, I do, I do need a formal motion making the designation.
So, oh, somebody can make a motion.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we designate Vice Mayor Jack Ding to be our voting delegate at the League of California Cities Conference, and we also direct him to strongly consider supporting both resolutions one and two.
And also that you will be the alternate.
And I will be the alternate, yes.
I'll second that.
Oh, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Felder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
7.1, committee reports.
I, I attended the SVCAC meeting on August 25th or 6th? SVCAC, Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Committee. You know, we have two esteemed alumni on our dais of the SVCAC, and obviously, the only topic that night was the Amazon Last Mile Distribution Center proposed to be at Victory Station at 121 and A Street East, and there was a lot of discussion about trip generation and proper traffic analysis, et cetera, and I'm a non-voting member, as you remember, but the SVCAC voted unanimously eight-nothing to recommend denial to the county planning commission. And so that's the update, but that is, it's just advisory body, and so at this point, it's with, you know, there, obviously, there are more, more studies and more decisions need to be made, but at this point, it's with the county.
Oh, with our city manager.
Okay, a couple of things. So, let's see, wanted to announce that the kickoff for our housing element is September 28th, that's, I forget, is that Tuesday? Oh, he's not here, Tuesday. Tuesday, September 28th, 6 to 8. Because of concern of the Delta variant, we're now proposing that meeting's going to be virtual. We're just worried if we get 50, 75 people in person, that's just not a good public policy, so this kickoff meeting unfortunately is going to be a virtual meeting on the housing element. The other thing, before I forget, is kudos to your city clerk for redoing the chamber tables and for actually getting a hybrid meeting to work.
It looks so nice. We can't wait for the pictures.
Yeah, and she also wrote, wanted to report on planning commission applicants, or the lack thereof.
Yeah, just the recruitment closed for the openings on the planning commission, the traffic safety committee, and the citizens advisory committee. Unfortunately, we, well, let me start with the good news. Fortunately, we did receive some applications for the traffic safety and the citizens advisory. So I plan to bring those back to you at the next council meeting for consideration. We'll be getting those out to you for review.
That's good.
The, unfortunately, the bad news is, the planning commission, we have not received any qualified applicants during this session, during this round, so I'm going to continue the recruitment. I would ask that if you know of anyone that you would like to put forward, or that you think would be a good person, anyone out in the public, please consider applying. It does, the position does, at this time, require them to be a qualified elector of the city, but it would be, I, you know, if you have any questions, please get ahold of my office, and we can walk you through the process on how do you apply.
Just for clarification, that's only for the alternate position.
Correct, it is. Thank you.
And then lastly, future agenda items?
I assume we'll discuss that on Friday?
Yes, it is listed as an item, but if you wanted to talk about anything this evening. And, and you don't have to, it's just there in case you want to. Oh, and I'm also, just let, remind everyone, the retreat starts at 8:30 at the Best Western. Oh, it's at eight?
Eight's fine.
Uh, eight?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait, did, so is it listed at eight or 8:30? Oh, the meeting's noted at 8:30, we just liked you to get there earlier just to settle, and we'll start at 8:30 sharp.
And it's open to the public, yeah.
Well, at this point, thank you so much, our city manager, Mr. Garrett Toy. I am adjourning this meeting. Oh, I, sorry, sorry. You, oh, you, you're comfortable with my decision?
I am.
Thank you. Sorry.